They're not actually located on Mercer Island. To your more fundamental question, are we maximizing our benefit, if you will, for the dollar we're contributing to Arch's administrative budget? I think that's a really interesting question and one I would like to explore further. I do think you asked kind of a provocative question, if you will, around the housing strategy that we may want to develop of whether we have an inclusionary zoning policy or not on Mercer Island in our town center or otherwise. I think that's all fair game as far as policy discussion goes. I would encourage the council to engage in that as part of your review of the housing element as we begin to talk about our next growth strategy. I think we've tended to treat these at the jurisdictional level as complimentary, if you will. Inclusionary zoning tends to work best at 70% or above median income rates. Inclusionary zoning being a requirement to provide the housing as part of a development approval. And for less than 70%, traditionally, I think that's been funded through a variety of specific mechanisms such as Arch, such as the King County Housing Authority, contributing to a specific construction project. It's not something that's typically market-driven. So these two pieces do complement each other in terms of how the affordable housing is provided. And I think we'd want to think a little bit carefully about how we might want to modify that moving forward, which then, of course, leads into the resource efficiency question.
Sure. And just to finish bookending that, the MFT has never been used in Mercer Island, is that correct?
I believe that is correct.
And the fee and lieu that you mentioned is something that has been contemplated but is not existing in the code. So to say provocative, I think that really is a good way to describe it. If we did do a fee and lieu, if you were going to take the fee and lieu instead of constructing the 10% of the units on Mercer Island, the amount of money that that would generate that would then flow to Arch to build units in an area that was less expensive to construct would, from economies of scale, from building, generate more units.
And Deputy Mayor, you may know that we've actually explored this question a little bit with Arch staff to calculate what a fee and lieu amount might look like instead of building those units in our town center. I think you're right, there is, it is relatively expensive to build a new unit in Mercer Island compared to some of the other jurisdictions. A fee and lieu program properly developed, I think, would make good sense in terms of contribution to the Housing Trust Fund. We wouldn't use that to offset our administrative cost.
One point that was interesting for me, which I learned last Friday, I believe it was, a week ago Friday, or just actually last Friday, is that from a King County perspective, they do not count affordable units per jurisdiction. It is aggregated at the King County level, and that shifted in 2012, I believe. So it's not as if Mercer Island has a number, and Bellevue has a number, and Kirkland has a number. It is aggregated, and that is one of the questions that has come up with regard to creating some degree of accountability and equity in the context of having affordability distributed throughout King County. So that will be, I know that's on the agenda, it'll be covered at least initially tomorrow with the GMBC, and it has come up in the Affordable Housing Task Force, just again, it was on Friday.
Mayor, may I add a quick commentary on that? I think you're absolutely correct. I would remind you, we've tended to focus on our GMA compliance. There are countywide planning policies that we would also want to consider, were we to choose to withdraw from the Arch program and pursue our own housing strategy. And as the council may know, there is a significant amount of discussion at the county level around what those revised policies should look like.
Yeah. Well, I think it'll be a hot topic in the next few years.
Mayor, may I ask a follow-up question? Allison or Evan, I know several months ago, when Lindsay Masters was here, the Arch Executive Director, she mentioned in passing that they would be taking a look at some point in the future at the interlocal agreements. They likely need to be retooled, and I know we've had a number of questions come up. What if we don't agree as a city with the budget? What if we don't do this? Has that conversation resurfaced lately about the timing of the interlocals being redeveloped or reconsidered?
I believe it's due to be reauthorized in 2021, if I'm remembering correctly. And so that has been noted that it needs to happen, and typically, that's been done at the executive board level, but it does need to be approved by all the individual councils if there are changes made to the agreement. And so if that's something that Mercer Island would like to recommend going forward, we can certainly do that.
I guess I would like to offer, going ahead into next year, it sounds like we may have an interest in revisiting the program, but certainly, we've pointed out some gaps we have in the current interlocal, so we should be probably getting out in front of that discussion.
Well, a question. So Evan, are you sitting right now on the, I think it was the executive board with full voting authority, or what is the state of Mercer Island's representation? Because I know Julie was there, and it sounds like you've, I heard the word "sitting in", but then "sitting on" and...
So I am sitting on the executive board. I can describe my state if you'd like, but the, I am sitting on the executive board when I'm not able to attend. I've asked Allison to attend on my behalf.
And you're there as a full voting person from Mercer Island?
Yes. And since I'm speaking to that, may I speak to Councilmember Wong's earlier comment? I do appreciate that this would have been more timely as a discussion item during the summer. With all of the other events going on, my best explanation is really there was too much on the table to try and get this in front of the city council at that time. And the budget discussion at Arch was primarily focused on correcting the compliance issues that had been unearthed and brought to the city council's attention really in June. So that's, our recommendation was to address those items and no more.
Evan, since we have a few minutes, can you speak to the order of magnitude? Because you did mention if we were to withdraw from Arch, that we would have not only the state law, the Growth Management Act requirements, but the county planning requirements. Just speak to the scale of what you would have to stand up within the city to fulfill the same obligations.
So I think Allison, a few moments ago, described that Arch effectively has had five staff positions for the last, I started planning in 1999, and they've had five at least since then, in my recollection. And, you know, if you look at our flat contribution, even with the adjustment that we're discussing this evening, we're on the order of roughly $80,000, which might cover three-quarters of a staff position here at the city of Mercer Island. In terms of the actual work, so recall that we need a housing strategy plan, and then we need to act to implement that housing strategy plan, which currently is what Arch is doing on our behalf. To develop the housing strategy plan in a way that would be meaningfully creating housing, we would need to scope this out. That would have some scoping and actual development effort on our part as part of presumably a 2020 or 2021 exercise. And then we would need to begin to implement. And both will take staff resource, both the planning component and the implementation component, if you will. I don't believe I could do that with a single full-time employee. And I say it that directly because I think this has been part of the thinking for Arch for many years, is that the Arch staff are actually city staff, pardon me, city staff that are our contract employees or effectively are contract employees, and they operate on behalf of the city. The units, the benefit, may not be located physically within the city of Mercer Island, but we do take credit for them. We are contributing to the regional affordable housing goals. So I don't know that this directly answers your question, Deputy Mayor. We have not scoped out what it would take to set up in terms of dollars our actual program. I am not confident I could do this for one FTE, and it is a very specialized position. This would be the other thing I would note for the council's consideration. It's a specialized position in that we're retaining a housing planner, and housing planners are not project review planners, if you will. And it's a skill set that's relatively uncommon in this region. So you are looking for highly-trained professional staff, which requires a competitive salary.
Yeah, no, I think that is a good job, but if we were to think just from a day-to-day perspective, what would that person do? They would be overseeing the annual, as you said, audit and applications for the 13 units at the Hadley, the Ellsworth House, the same thing. Code would have to then be changed to support the 60% and 50% strata, which doesn't exist on the island. Maybe that would come in the form of like an ADU-type incentive with a rental, you know, a low median income rental. So that's a bunch of code writing or code support. And then there would be compliance around that.
Pardon me, Deputy Mayor. And likely a capital project component as well. So recall, a moment ago, I noted that typically development project approvals, the market won't drive 60%, 50%, 30% affordable housing as part of a development approval system. So you typically then are generating money to the Housing Trust Fund, and what the Housing Trust Fund does is it leverages its investment with other partners. Imagine housing, federal government, King County Housing Authority, Seattle Housing Authority, others, Habitat for Humanity, to build actual projects. We don't have a capital development, you know, single-family construction or multifamily construction expertise on staff, and that would be the other component we would need to look into.
Yeah, yeah, certainly, have you left?
Lisa?
Okay, thanks. So a couple of questions. Is it then fair to kind of look at our contribution to the Arch administrative budget as like an insurance payment? That it kind of doesn't matter if you have any claims or not? You're all going to kind of contribute to the common pot based on some allocation?
I think if the concern is liability under the Growth Management Act or the King County planning policies in this insurance analogy, that liability is addressed by our contribution to Arch.
But, and it also, but it holds us with staff at Arch in reserve to perform necessary functions, meaning that we're insured against having to perform those ourselves?
I think that's correct.
So two other questions. Would we be, if we approve this today, are we making any statement at all about the Housing Trust Fund?
No, you would not be. That's already been budgeted, and as I said earlier, you will be taking action to approve the specific projects that could be funded through the Housing Trust Fund in 2020.
Okay. And then, I guess my final question is, again, if we do approve this, and I kind of feel like we're boxed in really because we haven't withdrawn from the agreement, and I don't know how we can approve less than the budget they're asking for, although I'm disinclined to do it based on the timing and the dollar amount. But how will we, how will we know if it's working? How will we know if these increased administrative budget is paying off?
I think we'll need to look to the Arch staff to provide an update on the compliance of their programs, the success of their programs. They currently provide quarterly reports on their work program and budget. I provided an example of that to the council earlier today. So I think, you know, the staff can provide that data to show that they're implementing the recommendations from the consultant report and the results of that work.
Thanks.
Okay, council, are there any further questions? I know, okay.
In terms of optimizing the ILA, when you get to that, if you're there, can you look at the termination provision? Because it's, it doesn't really work for elected bodies, the timing of it?
Yeah, it's a kind of unusual how it...
The way that they have the notice and then the timing and then tied to a calendar year, it doesn't, it's not really a tool that works for cities.
Yeah, I'm happy to put that on the list.
Thanks.
Okay. Well, with that, we're going to go ahead and conclude the study session. We're going to reconvene for a start again with the full council agenda at 7 o'clock, so we are adjourned for approximately eight to nine minutes. I heard, I know there's two minutes, but it takes you guys two minutes to get here. Or it could be a minute and one second. Okay, it is 7 o'clock, and we lost Benson. Okay, great. Well, thank you, everyone, for being here. We've just concluded a study session, and we're now going to move on to regular business. But before we get into the regular, regular business, we have one item of special business that is quite positive and quite fun. So tonight, we'd actually like to honor one of our younger residents who's been making an impact weekend after weekend by imparting his knowledge and passion for all things composting. Tristan, he knows who he is. Tristan Schweetall volunteers at the farmer's market each week, sorting the trash into the correct bins for compost, recycling, and garbage. It's a dirty job, and it takes hours to do, but he does it with a smile on his face. He's a resource for helping people understand the environmental benefits of using compostable products and in a very courteous manner. He's been educating the market team, vendors, and market attendees on products that are compostable. He suggests online sites for compostable education and obtaining products that are better for the planet. So Tristan, on behalf of the city of Mercer Island, I would like to present to you a special city steward award for your volunteer work at the farmer's market. And as a token of our appreciation, we have a few goodies for you, including a, I'll grab We have a Mercer Island reusable shopping bag, a compost bin, a reusable city water bottle, a gift card to the Recology store, and a gift certificate for a tour at Recology's recycling center. So Tristan, would you, would you mind saying a few words? Would you mind coming up to the podium?
All right, go for it. Hi, my name is Tristan Schweetall, and I'm nine years old, almost 10, and I'm excited to have the huge honor of being able to speak here. I volunteered at the market for, or the Mercer Island Farmer's Market for five years now, and I volunteered to make sure vendors use compostable packaging and, yeah, packaging for their products. And I also help sort, or I help make sure people sort their waste correctly into compost recycling garbage. In addition, I make sure, yeah, yeah. When I'm not at the market, on my free time, I recycle scrap metal. I pull it apart and recycle it, or get it recycled at the scrapyard. Yeah. That's somewhere I decided to keep track of how much metal I recycled, and the total was 7,000 pounds of scrap metal saved from landfills. Yeah. Yeah, that's it.
Well, we were hoping maybe the family could come up, and we could have a picture up here with Tristan, and we'll give him his special gift. But I also want to attest, I had personal experience, I don't know if you remember, he came to a house, and he actually went through the house, and I know you took away a dishwasher and a whole bunch of other stuff, so that was really great. So why don't you guys stand in front? We're gonna... So thank you so much for everything. So 7,000 pounds is a lot of scrap metal, so thank you very much for that. And we look forward to having you back. I'm sure you have a lot of education you can do for the broader community as well. And maybe Ross needs an intern. You could be his intern for us. Yeah. Okay. Well, great, thank you. So next up on the agenda, we have the city manager's report, and for that, we welcome interim city manager Jesse Pohn.
Well, thank you very much, Mayor, and good evening. That is a tough act to follow. I know what I was doing when I was nine, and it was not that, so very impressive Tristan. I can attest, he has helped me properly sort my waste at the market as well. This evening's city manager's report is in the spirit of Thanksgiving. We have many things to celebrate and many accomplishments over the last several weeks. So first off, just wanted to tell you about the outcomes of our recent drug take-back event. 284 pounds of unused medications were collected at the event. Thank you to the Mercer Island Police Department and the DAA for hosting this annual event. And it will be back again next year. Thank you very much. In other Thanksgiving news, thank you to all of the people that came out and shopped the anniversary sale. I see the mayor saying that she went and spent some money there. $40,000 in one-day sales, which broke last year's record of, I believe it was $30,000, so very nicely done. There wasn't enough room on this slide to describe all of the logistics that go into preparing for this sale, but I will tell you, it is dependent on an army of volunteers, so thank you for everybody that came out. 750 transactions and close to 4,000 items sold. I meant to ask, what was the highest value item, but I forgot. I'm sure it was something the mayor purchased, right? In continuing in my theme of giving thanks, a special thank you to Mercer Island veterans of foreign wars post 5760 for delivering again a donation of gift cards to the... of foreign wars post 5760 for delivering again a donation of gift cards to the YFS Food Bank for holiday meals. They have been doing this annually since 2006, and there they are, featured with our YFS staff and volunteers. So thank you very much for that donation. Continuing on with more thanks and good news to the city, Mercer Island resident who has asked to remain anonymous recently donated $20,000 to the police department to support restoration of a number of our programs that were eliminated through the recent budget reductions. So in 2020, we're pleased to announce that the Citizens Academy, CERT, and National Night Out will be returning. Again, this person that made the donation asked to remain anonymous, and I will also say, this is the same individual that previously donated $20,000 to our fire department. So thank you if you happen to be listening tonight, and I'm sure everybody's watching this meeting, thank you for your generosity. All right, speaking of farmer's market, are you going to be there this weekend, Tristan? Good news. It's our harvest market on Sunday from 10:00 to 3:00 at Mercer Dale Park. So this is the last event until the farmer's market comes back this spring, so we hope everybody will get out there. I think the weather forecast is, well, it's always a good day to be out in the market. All right, more, more upcoming news. Our firefighters are actually getting into the effort. They will be out next Wednesday from 9:00 to sometime early in the evening. At both, okay, both QFC locations, great. Collecting donations for the YFS food pantry. So if you're like me, and you're going to be shopping right before Thanksgiving for your food, consider making a donation. I will say, there's been a call going out for donations to the food bank, so some things that are particularly needed, cereal, soups, tuna, peanut butter and jelly, pasta, sauces, school lunch-type snacks, fruits, those types of things. I am told not to give the canned peas, because nobody likes those, right? If you'd like more information about YFS, the website is there. A reminder, we will be closed next Thursday and Friday. Hey, we're getting into the holiday spirit, so coming up, starting November 30th, the tree lot will be back. This is on the Tully's site again this year. And proceed to support Mercer Island Youth and Family Services, you can see my theme of Thanksgiving is continuing, and the Mercer Island Lions Club, so please get out and consider purchasing your tree, but they also need volunteers, and actually, a lot of volunteers. So if you'd like to get involved, we've included some information there. All right, more good news, and this is, you've seen this slide before, we are so thankful for the volunteers that have come forward, both giving of their time and their donations to bring back the lighting, it's now called the lighting at Mercer Dale Park, and the firehouse munch, excuse me, Friday, December 6. And it will be from, the lighting is about 6:30, and then we'll move over to the firehouse for the munch at 7:00. Also, the fire folks will be doing a fill-the-boot fundraiser, and if you'd like to donate or volunteer, Diane Mortensen and the Parks and Rec Department would be happy to get you connected to that effort. And finally, another fun Thanksgiving update. November 8th, one of our officers, police officer White and Rutter rescued a Shiba Inu, which is a kind of dog, from a narrow ravine. And once they got the dog out, they were greeted by another dog, and they ended up in a fun tussle, and these photos were up on Facebook. So we thought we'd show you the police officers and their other duties as assigned role. Anyway, I wish you all, on behalf of the city of Mercer Island, a really happy Thanksgiving, and thank you to the community and the volunteers for making all of that possible. And that is all I have this evening.
Great, well, thank you. Okay, so next on our item, or agenda, sorry, is appearances, and this, of course, is the opportunity for anyone to speak to council on any item. So just a quick reminder that all remarks be addressed to the council as a whole, and not to individual council members or staff members. And any person making personal impertinent or slanderous remarks or becomes boisterous, threatening, or personally abusive while addressing the council may be requested to leave the meeting. So hopefully, people have seen that there's a signup sheet there. When it is your turn to address council, please be sure to speak audibly into the podium microphone and state your name for the record, and Deb will have the three-minute shot clock on. So with that, do we have people signed up?
We do have a few. I have a Dwight Schaefer, Peter Struck, Gary Robinson, Mark Hirayama, and John Harrington.
Terrific. Welcome.
This is regards to the legislative priorities, which I refer to as a tax increase without a vote. The city failed to convince Mercer Island voters to approve the Prop 1 levy. The city next failed to stake revenue enhancements through in the form of much higher garbage rates. Now, the city wants the legislature to increase property taxes by the amount of inflation plus population growth, and remove restrictions on real estate excess taxes, as documented Mercer Island 2020 Legislative Priorities approved at the 1023 Joint City Council and Planning Commission meeting. The effect is to enable the city council to increase property taxes 2% to 3% a year without a vote of the people, thereby circumventing the failure of Proposition 1. Now, property taxes are frequently codized as being limited to 1%. This is not true. From 2014 to 15, it was a 4.2% increase. 15 to 16, 1.8%. 16 to 17, 3.4%. 17 to 18, 3%. Okay, these rates are equivalent to 3.1% per year compounded annually, and they exceed the CPIW for the salary over the same time period. But everybody keeps focusing on property taxes, saying they're the biggest at 40%. The alternate view is, they're only 40%, time to look at the other 60%. Meanwhile, sales taxes increased 8.9% from 2017 to 18, dominantly due to the new internet sales tax. And investment interest increased 93%. The priorities list also calls for new taxes in the form of carbon taxes. For the residents, this is nothing more than an increase in the gasoline and utility taxes, without evidence that this is the most cost-effective way to reduce greenhouse gases. Meanwhile, the effect of forest fires on greenhouse gases is ignored. And then there's a push to spend for electric vehicles and electric heat, ignoring the higher costs and the fact that PSE gets 1/3 of its electricity from coal. So every time you force somebody off of natural gas onto electricity, you're really forcing them from, off of natural gas onto coal. It's time for the city council to focus on productivity and efficiency and eliminating waste, rather than invent new ways to increase spending and taxes without a vote of the city.
Welcome.
Good evening, Peter Struck. I sent you a fairly lengthy email yesterday, hopefully you all had a chance to read it, and I just want to highlight a few things. First, regard to the ARCH operating budget, and I appreciate the study session tonight, as well as I, I'm sympathetic to the challenges that ARCH has, but I'm also sympathetic to what the city is facing in terms of financial sustainability. And we've asked the residents over the last 12 to 18 months to go through significant service cutbacks and so forth, so to approve a 53% increase really sends the wrong message, and the optics to the community look really bad, and I, and I appreciate, again, all your comments tonight on that, that issue. We'll see what happens. On the commuter parking project, you know, there's this reimbursement agreement that's before you tonight, and I would ask that if we could get a little bit more understanding of what exactly that means. So the consultants say that the total cleanup cost could be between $9 and $18 million, if I recall correctly. I built a very simple model to try to understand, well, what does that really mean, in terms of reimbursements? And the reimbursements, you know, are not going to cover 100%, so you could be, the city could be looking at potentially several million dollars that they're going to have to shoulder, or perhaps find other sources to fund. And then that kind of brings the question of, you know, a couple of years ago, when this was deemed the top priority of the council and the community for commuter parking, I think it was done under the assumption that it was prudent and not, you know, at any cost. So I would hope that you would understand, as you go into this, you know, has the feasibility of this project changed based on this reimbursement agreement or not? I don't know the answer. I'm not sure you do either. I would hope that that comes out in the discussion. And then finally, in terms of the public institution code amendment tonight on the Tully site, I thought it was very instructive that your planning commission made some recommendations as to making sure that you, you know, engage more with the neighbors, and I assume by extension, the community, get more input from them, and also to continue to maximize commuter parking, as well as protect existing parkland and open space. And I would urge you, before you would pass this, that you get more specific as to how are you going to engage the community and the neighbors and so forth. Clearly, what, to date, really hasn't been working as well as I think it could be. And secondly, in terms of, you know, the, the public institution amendment, exactly where the boundary is going to change, if at all, I think we should know that before you actually go ahead and do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you, distinguished council. Gary Robinson. The Mercer Island City Council provides leadership for the island through its policies and delegation to the city staff. Leadership is important and provides the context for islanders' quality of life. I would like to offer a commendation and a request. I would like to commend the city council, Jesse Bond, Ally Speets, for their leadership in redrafting the ethics policies and its implementing policies. The shortcomings of the policy were laid bare by events this past year, and this is a step in the right direction of ensuring our ethics policy is commensurate with other city government benchmarks in the area. Thank you to all who worked on this important revision of our ethics policy. That was really a good piece of work. Now, the request I have is that you provide greater leadership in one of the intangible, but extraordinarily important areas, bringing our island together. During our previous election, there was a distinct effort made to make the island election partisan, on behalf of those replacing existing council members and to be divisive. An organization that is called Mercer Island Democratic Action has gone so far as to publish a list of residents who, in their opinion, are angry people, this is a quote, quote, "that post-file discussions uncivil and anti-Semitic dialogue." This type of divisiveness is toxic, decreases the quality of life on Mercer Island, and invites disproportionate response. It's not helpful. My perspective is that what is considered uncivil and foul is anything that seeks to change the status quo and goes contrary to the actions of the legacy council. It is classic resistance to change. I suggest that as part of your leadership mantle, you amend your work plan for 2020 and search for specific ways to unite us. I would point out that some of the citizens are already doing this, as the city manager showed tonight. I would point out that some of the citizens are helping with the, helped with the All Island Picnic last summer, and the coming holiday tree lighting and firehouse munch after the misguided cancellation of them.
Thank you.
I understand that plans are being proposed for renewed summer celebration. We need these as a means to increase our sense of community. We need your support of this type of action and find other ways to increase it. That is what brings our island together, not publishing lists of people you disagree with. And my apologies, I timed it, and I thought I was on three minutes.
That's all right. Welcome.
Hi, my name's Mark Hirayama. I'm at 7800 Southeast 27th Street. So I've got three quick things. First, I'd like to express appreciation for the action that was taken for the letter that I sent about a week ago to, to the council and Jesse about accurately representing the footprint of the commuter parking project. I saw that the Let's Talk site has already been updated, so I definitely appreciate that. Thank you. Second, regarding Agenda Bill 5634, I sent an email just, just this morning, so I have a copy of it, if anyone hasn't seen it yet, just asking a few questions about the, the proposed settlement for the site remediation. So I won't go into detail there, but it's basically around entering the settlement agreement before the, the site delineation study is, is available, making sure any cost overages are addressed, and concerns around that we're not, the city's not being fully reimbursed for the cleanup costs. And lastly, regarding Agenda Bill 5632, the public institution, institution code amendment for the Tully, for Parcel 12, again, this is the letter I sent earlier today, so I have a copy of, of the letter that I sent to the planning commission that's referred to in the Agenda Bill, in case anyone wants a copy of that as well, so. So just let me know, and I think that's it. All right, thanks.
Great, thank you. Welcome.
Hello, my name is Dr. Jonathan Harrington. I live, live at 9514 Southeast 68th Street. So where were you in 2007, the last time that we set reduction in emissions for greenhouse gases, which was 80% by 2050? I remember the cast of characters that sat around the table, El Jenki, Steve Litzow, Don Gross, Mayor Carnes, may he rest in peace, Rich Conrad as well, was very interested in the technologies of climate mitigation. Al Gore's An Inconvenient Truth was published, which introduced the masses to both negative implications of global warming, and also to strategies available to mitigate and adapt it. Fast forward to today, 2019, the science of climate change has progressed, revealing that the effects of global warming are developing much faster than predicted. Many now use the terms "climate crisis" or "climate emergency" to reflect an increasing urgency to act. The effects of global warming are not obvious to everyone, it is in our backyards. Smoke from wildfires fills the air, each year is hotter than the last, sea level rise is accelerating. The yearly cost to the US economy is in the hundreds of billions of dollars every year. Given these circumstances, I urge the city to adopt Resolution 1570, which brings Mercer Island's greenhouse gas emissions commitment in line with our east side, other east side neighbors. Combating global warming is a classic, classic collective action dilemma. All actors, large and small, must coordinate their efforts to bring about meaningful changes in emissions. We also need to acknowledge that reducing emissions by 50% is ambitious. It cannot be achieved without some kind of game plan. Fortunately, the planning commission has crafted an amendment to the Mercer Island Conference Plan, which will deepen the city's legal and institutional commitment to reduce emissions. This common sense amendment takes stock of past actions while also urging the city to plan for its future. I urge you to approve the Climate Plan Amendment without watering it down, so that our community can both talk the talk and walk the walk towards a low-carbon world. And finally, I'd like to thank all of you who have made personal sacrifices and dedicated your time and energy with little expectation of reward over the past years to serving the special place that we call home. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public appearances? Ira's going to close it out?
No. Maybe there'll be others. Okay, Ira Appelman, three issues.
Okay, Ira Appleman, three issues. Number one, ARCH. I think we need to stay in ARCH. It's necessary to fulfill our responsibilities under the Growth Management Act, and it is in our comprehensive plan. I think we need to fix ARCH, and hopefully what you were doing today will help that. In listening to what you were doing today, I've published in national journals in my field in psychology, and the way that's done is that when a proposal comes in or an article comes in, it's sent out to anonymous reviewers, say, three anonymous reviewers, and they anonymously respond, and that's what I think you should do with projects like the ARCH, what ARCH put out today. There are experts on the island. I would take whatever ARCH's plan is and send it out anonymously to those experts and get, you have to identify those experts, but I think that people will volunteer on the island, and I think we'd get a better response because I don't think many of us are expert enough to really evaluate what was said today. Two, ethics. I'm not really thrilled about your ethics thing. It depends too much on money, and I don't think that's the problem here. Do we have people taking bribes? I haven't seen that. I actually agreed with Mayor Burtland's trip to Israel, even though there was an expense to it. I think the way to solve a problem associated with accepting something is to have the council accept it and then the mayor go. I think it was an important thing for the mayor to go, and Israel is under attack, and I appreciate that she did go to Israel to see what's actually going on there and part of that program. My problem with the council and the reason why you see me, and you've seen me for 22-plus years, is that often the council doesn't tell the truth, and that's my number one ethics issue, and it's not in your in your ethics ordinance. So for example, the prop one thing where the city and city staff said things like it's a 1% increase per year when it's actually 1% plus construction, I think that's a clear example where the city wasn't telling the truth, and that's what I think is an ethical violation. Issue number three is Tully's. What worries me about that, and remember, I'm against TOD, but transit oriented development and what Main Street's going to do, but I'm for putting MICA there, and what I don't see is any risk assessment in your materials, and I think that's critical. You say the city is in financial difficulty, but now we're taking on a lot of risk. What you can be sure of is that there's more pollution moving around there than we get from sampling studies. And so I'm worried about risk, and I think you should have a risk assessment study before you before you sign on to the agenda bill today. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Ira, you weren't signing us off. Welcome.
Have to end with a pretty face, no offense. First of all, I want to thank Gary for your comments on the ethics policy. I do agree that the ethics policy needs to be updated. I would also suggest that you add that any city council person cannot be a lead on next door. Next door leads have a lot of power to downvote comments and change the conversation, so just so that there's no appearance of a conflict of interest, I would suggest that you add that into the policy. I wanted to talk about a couple of things. I wanted to talk about Tully's footprint. I was recently in one of my old neighborhoods, going from 15th to Mercer Way, and so on the west side of Mercer Street, there they have built five to six-story condos right up to the sidewalk, and it has completely changed the 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 street and how it works for people. And right now, the footprint is going, taking over the linear park and going right up to the sidewalk. And during this past campaign, we had a lot of candidates speak at Al Joya for one place, and they expressed that as a huge concern. A lot of Al Joya residents walk. I was surprised. And they walk on that path so that they can get to Island Books, so they can go to Walgreens, so they can go to True Value, so they can enjoy the the area there. And if you build a, MICA and Main Street builds right up to that sidewalk, it's going to prevent people from going there. It's going to be shrouded in, and it's not going to be conducive of people wanting to wanting to enjoy that walk and make that walk, and it's going to force people to go into cars, which we don't want to do. So I would really encourage you, when you're looking at the actual footprint, I don't understand, I support MICA, but I don't understand why it continues to need to be 35,000 square feet. And I think if it was made smaller, I think part of a risk assessment would show that it would still be successful, then you could take that back and the whole area would be would fit better in the area. Lastly, the community facility zone, and I don't have time to say any comment about it, except that I was really discouraged during this campaign for people who are are not supportive of this community facility zone, by just by saying their thoughts on it, they were labeled anti-Semitic. And I just think you, as leaders of the council, can help redirect that conversation. People should be able to say they don't want MICA in Mercer Dale and not be labeled against arts, and that's the same with any sort of zoning or any sort of change in the community. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Okay, public appearances is now closed. We now move on to consent calendar, and consent calendar contains accounts payable reports for November 4th and November 6th. We have certification of payroll dated November 8th, minutes for November 4th, AB 5627, approval of the ARCH 2020 work plan and budget, AB 5612, Groveland Park repairs and shoreline improvement projects closeout. Is there a motion to approve as presented?
Mayor, may I request the AB 5627 be pulled off?
Okay, so we will remove the ARCH work plan and budget discussion.
Move to, to accept the consent calendar as modified.
First and second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? All right. So shall we move the ARCH to?
Wherever.
Yeah, sorry, I put my agenda.
Historically, we typically would move something pulled off the consent calendar to the first item of regular business.
Yeah, I want to look at staff, though, because I know that we also have some consultants here for the first item who, let me say bluntly, are billing by the hour.
Mayor, we have a consultant here for item consultants here, plural, for item number seven, and a consultant here for item number eight, so I would recommend we move it after item number eight, if you would be.
Got it.
Helpful to that.
Sounds good. All right, so with that, we now move on to regular business with the first item being Agenda Bill 5634, the reimbursement agreement for environmental remediation with Atlantic Richfield Company and seller of the 7810 Southeast 27th ARCO property for the city's proposed commuter parking and mixed use project. So for that, we welcome interim city attorney, Beal Park, and team. So, sorry, city manager or attorney, who will be presenting?
Yeah, mayor, the group, our staff group will present themselves, so.
Okay. All right, well, we have a, we have, well, familiar faces to some of us, all should be familiar, of course, with Kirsten Taylor and Carrie Sand, our former city attorney. So maybe Kirsten, we'll go ahead and start with you.
Kirsten Taylor, senior project manager. Good evening, Carrie Sand with Ogden Murphy Wallace, and I'm special counsel on this matter for continuity's sake, your former city attorney.
Good evening, Jeff Cray from Martin Law, I'm your environmental counsel.
Good evening, I'm Jeremy Porter with Aspect Consulting, environmental consultant.
And here's our information, in case you did not catch that just now. So, good evening. As stated already, we're here to talk about Agenda Bill 5634, and this is the reimbursement agreement for environmental remediation with Atlantic Richfield Company and seller of the 7810 Southeast 27th Street property for the city's proposed commuter parking and mixed use project. So just to orient everyone, as a reminder, the the area that we're talking about, outlined in the red box here on the screen, is the site that we've been referring to, starting back in June 5th of 2018 as the Tully site, because that's the former coffee shop right there. And then we've more recently been calling it the ARCO property, and that's because we know that ARCO historically operated a gasoline service station there from approximately 1955 to 19, early 1990s, and it was also a gasoline service station under different ownership as well. And then the city currently owns this cul-de-sac bulb, the Sunset Highway cul-de-sac bulb right there. And just as a reminder for everyone, the problem that we are trying to solve here is providing additional access to transit and also additional commuter parking for islanders. This site is optimally located, a short walk from the future East Link Light Rail Station, and also the city is very uniquely situated as the prospective buyer of this site, given, again, that the city owns this cul-de-sac bulb, which is part of parcel 12, and actually extends further to the west in this area, which is not as part of the red box because it's not proposed to be part of the project footprint for the commuter parking. So just a little bit of background, recall that nearly a year and a half ago, this process started when, again, the city entered into a purchase and sale agreement to acquire the so-called Tully's ARCO property. That was actually Agenda Bill 5434, and this is 5634, so that was actually 200 Agenda Bills ago, which I just find fascinating. So anyhow, lots happened since the year and a half has passed, since then the city's been very actively engaged in due diligence. We have been exploring all aspects of the property, similar to an inspection report when purchasing residential property. We've been trying to ascertain all the environmental conditions and the estimated remedial action costs to clean up the site. This is actually one of several known contaminated sites in the town center, and we believe it's a really positive step forward for the city's mixed use commuter parking project that this site would get cleaned up as a result of redeveloping the site. We also had a site survey completed because in the process of really drilling down and trying to examine the city's project, we needed to identify the areas that are owned by the city, owned by Wash Dot, owned by the current owners of the, again, Tully slash ARCO site, and then also try to figure out how that contamination is dispersed throughout those different areas. So next, I'm going to hand it off to Jeremy Porter of Aspect Consulting to talk to the council more about all the various environmental issues with this particular site.
Thanks, Gary. All right. So from the environmental perspective of a property purchase, there's a few normal steps that are done to understand the environmental issues and reports and studies that have to be done. And the very simplest of that, very typical, is a phase one environmental study. That's just looking to understand how the property was used, what available information there is about environmental conditions, have there been spills, is there contamination already known there? At this site, that was, it was a foregone conclusion that there was contamination there. There's been a lot of work done on the site and adjacent sites. So from the get-go, we've been working on essentially a phase two environmental study in which we go in and we actually collect soil and groundwater samples to understand what kind of contamination is there, how far does it go, you know, what are the limits of that contamination, and then we can use that information to understand what are the potential costs and risks associated with the site. So that has been ongoing, as Carrie said, really since the beginning of the process for a year and a half. It's, the vast majority of that work has been completed. It's been a fairly robust study, a lot of work has been done. There is a little bit of work that is still pending, and that's some additional investigation in the I-90 area. We're coordinating with Wash Dots on how to, or where to put additional investigation points there, and I'll get to that when we get to a map to show why. But that work in I-90 is something that ultimately would be needed for regulatory closure, but is not something that affects the development itself of the property because it's outside that footprint. So as I mentioned, we've done quite a number of installing soil borings, installing groundwater wells, and mapping the extent of contamination. As we knew going in, the site is contaminated, there's a fair amount of contamination on the site, but we've been able to find the boundaries to the east, to the west, and to the south. As mentioned, there is a little bit of work in the I-90 right of way. The vast majority of the contamination does appear to have come from the former ARCO station, the operations on the property itself. And that's, and as you move away to the edges, that's when contamination reduces and eventually becomes not detectable. So the the primary contaminant here is gasoline, and there are some contaminants like benzene and tylenol that are just part of gasoline, and that is the vast majority of contamination. There's a little bit of diesel and other petroleum products on the site. There are not any chlorinated solvents that we found, and that's that's important because there used to be a dry cleaner next door that was cleaned up. That was one thing we looked very carefully at. This is a map of showing you in kind of green, yellow, red, the concentrations, I'm sorry, you can't read on this map, that wasn't the intention, but the, it's where you have contamination. Green is there is, in groundwater, there's nothing detected, sorry. So you can see we have wells over on the west side that are clean there, wells on the east side that are clean there, and the south side to the edges here, you have a clean over here. The yellow means that it was detected but is below the applicable cleanup level, so the state would say that that's okay, that's not really contaminated, you just have a very little bit there. The vast majority is, what is impacted is the property itself, and then moving north from the property, it's in the direction of groundwater flow. So groundwater carries contamination with it, it flows to the north, and it's flowing towards I-90. As I said, the primary contaminants are gasoline and gasoline-related chemicals like So to summarize, there was a gas station and service station, service stations on the property from the 1950s through the early 1990s, that's when it became a Tully's. The petroleum hydrocarbons that were released on the property have migrated a little bit south into the street, mostly to the north in the primary direction of groundwater flow. So the state environmental law is Matka, Model Toxics Control Act. It requires that the whole site be cleaned up. If you're working on a release and it's on the property, it's migrated off the property, then cleanup has to extend to where it's migrated to. And to put this in perspective of the parcels that we're talking about, the BP ARCO property is here, also the former, called the former Tully's. The city currently owns this portion of the right of way, which, as I had mentioned on the on the previous slide, has contamination on it. And then Wash Dot currently owns A2, B2, and B3. Is that correct, Gary?
That's correct.
So talking briefly about the cost of cleanup, the cost estimates can range, and there's a number of factors that depend, that will affect how much it will cost to clean up. One is the type of development and the future use of the property. For these contaminants in this setting, the contamination does go quite deep. The the easiest way to clean it up, the most effective way, is excavation. Now, digging deep. Now, digging deep is, can be very expensive in itself, that's why it's great to combine it with development. It's probably the, just the fastest and most effective way of cleaning up contamination is to excavate it, take it off the site, and send it to a landfill that can handle the contaminated material. So, if you are doing below-grade excavation, it's the most efficient way of clean, as part of a development, it's the most efficient way of also cleaning up the site. If this site were developed as a surface lot, there are others, you can dig it up and backfill it with clean soil, or you could, there are a number of other remediation methods of handling the contamination. And there's a range of how fast they work and how much they cost. Typically, we would go into, we'd work with the regulator and a developer to develop the most cost-effective cleanup plan that meets the objectives that everybody needs when you get your buy-off agreement by the state. The two agencies that might be overseeing this are Department of Ecology, that's the primary agency for cleanup, or PLEA, which is Pollution Liability Insurance Agency, they cover some petroleum sites. And so, either one of those agencies might end up regulating this project, and ultimately, they would be the ones providing a letter or some sort of agreement that the site has been adequately cleaned up. As I mentioned, soil removal is the most effective and in with development, the most efficient way of remediating the site. There are other ways of injecting way, thing, chemicals to destroy the contamination, to help biodegradation of contamination naturally. Typically, the soil is removed first, that removes most of the contamination. You might follow on with some additional work to treat lower levels of contamination that are in place. There will be a period of monitoring to prove in that you've cleaned it up, and then you issue a final report for regulatory agreement.
Thank you, Jeremy. So I'm going to talk about the terms of the agreement that's before you this evening. This is the reimbursement agreement that was negotiated between the city, the sellers of the property, and the Atlantic Ridgefield Company through its representatives at British Petroleum, which has now acquired Atlantic Ridgefield. So you'll see some terms in here. ARC is Atlantic Ridgefield Company, it's sometimes referred to as Arco. So when you hear the term Arco property, it's the same entity, but for formal purposes of the agreement, it ends up being ARC. The sellers are a number of different individuals and a trust, and so when you look at the agreement, there's a series of names there, but collectively, they own the property that is the former Arco property, also referred to as the Tully's property. And that's that group of parties. So there are three parties to the agreement. There is an implicit fourth party to the agreement that's worth mentioning as well, and that is the future developer. And there are terms in the agreement that are designed to provide a mechanism by which reimbursements would go either to the city or to the developer, for efficiency purposes in the event of the redevelopment goes forward and how that proceeds. So, there was a point where we looked at possibly having the developer directly in there, and that became unmanageable, and it makes more sense to structure it the way we did. And ultimately, that's the structure on which the parties negotiated the draft agreement that's before you now. Jeremy mentioned this concept of property versus site, and I think it's important to recognize that again. A site is defined as everywhere where the contamination from a particular release has come to be located, whether that's in soil or groundwater, or even through the air. And a property is your bounds for real estate purposes. And so in this instance, we have a number of different properties at play, Jeremy walked you through those on the map. We sometimes have referred to those as parcels or areas. And then, we have the site, which is where the contamination has gone. It's important to recognize that this agreement is designed to provide reimbursement for the site in some instances, and then for particular areas in other instances, and I'll talk about that in further detail in just a moment. Jeremy also mentioned the redevelopment versus no redevelopment scenarios, and those are also built into the agreement. We had quite a bit of negotiation over those issues. The redevelopment scenario is the one that would result in excavation. A no redevelopment scenario, you could choose your cleanup methodology so that you wouldn't incur those costs for soil disposal that you would otherwise incur in redevelopment. And one of the purposes of the way we drafted the agreement was to leave the city the flexibility to make those changes as it saw fit down the road, and ensure that we didn't get ahead of the redevelopment process or any other process that you're going through by the nature of this agreement. This agreement, in my mind, is very unique in several respects. It's somewhat rare in my practice, and most of what I do as environmental cleanup associated with properties, to have a major oil company like BP come to the table and negotiate it with us in this fashion, and reach an agreement that didn't involve some threat of litigation or actual litigation. And as the council is aware, through the year and a half that we've been doing this, BP started off with a position that they were minimally responsible for this property, and now we've reached this agreement where they're taking 100% responsibility for the former Arco property, substantial responsibility for other portions of the property, including a 90% responsibility for what we characterize as general parts of the work that would need to be done, and 80% responsibility for any soil and groundwater cleanup costs that needed to be done. And I'll come back to that in just a moment. The regulatory closure scenario that Jeremy mentioned is anticipated by the agreement. The purpose of the agreement is to take the cost through to that regulatory closure. And what regulatory closure means is some indication from the appropriate agency, whether it's Ecology or its sister agency, Pollution Liability Insurance Agency, that the cleanup for the site is now complete. And that regulatory closure can be in the form of what's often referred to as a no further action determination. But whatever that is, this agreement contemplates that there will be a formal determination from the appropriate regulatory agency that will decide that that cleanup is complete. That's the point at which BP would no longer be responsible for paying costs, and there is even a provision built into the agreement for, should something come back, what's called a re-opener, that BP would then become again responsible for paying its appropriate portions of costs in the future. And so, this is intended to keep BP responsible and paying through the end of whatever process is necessary to fully clean up this property and the resultant site. In that respect, it's also unique, in my experience, this is not something that we could achieve through a judicial outcome. In other words, a court would not necessarily be able to provide this level of detail and complexity. A settlement is often a more powerful tool for that purpose, and is a better outcome at often lesser cost than you would be able to achieve if you had to take this through The cleanup work will be consistent with the environmental state law, the predominant law is the Model Toxics Control Act, or MATA, and there are provisions in the agreement that set the standards against which will measure BP's responsibility for paying the costs or ARC's responsibility. I tend to use them interchangeably, and I'm not trying to create any confusion by doing that, but ultimately, the responsible party is ARC or Atlantic Ridgefield. Atlantic Ridgefield is not admitting liability, in fact, no party is admitting liability under this agreement, we're leaving that open, and is, however, paying both the city and the owner for past costs, defined as those costs that have been incurred to, to the date of the agreement, and those would be submitted to BP or to ARC, and would have to be paid. It's also committing to provide the city, or a developer, or any assinees, meaning people we could transfer the property to in the future with future incremental costs. And I'll talk in a moment a little bit more about this concept of incremental costs. I did want to leave room open, I know we've all been talking, but I hope, I welcome questions if it's helped you, to the council to better understand the agreement at any time, and we're certainly capable of taking those at the end as well.
Thank you. I think we're good, keep going.
So with regard to, is this me, or does this seem to be upside down in the direction?
It is. It's upside down.
With regard to the key term incremental costs, Jeremy touched on this already, and there are instances, and this is one of them, where you have opportunities for redevelopment, and those opportunities for redevelopment mean that somebody would come in and it would incur costs necessary to the development that overlap with the cost that you might incur for cleanup. And they provide an opportunity that is unique and efficient for cleanup purposes. These are often the type of situations that we see in the work that Jeremy and I do, that are the most cost-effective, the most complete from a cleanup standpoint, and achieve the best outcome for a clean, for a complete cleanup of the environmental contamination. And that's where you're already going to go below grade for the redevelopment, and you're going to have those costs for excavation and shoring, and the heavy equipment, and all the things that you would do for your development that would facilitate a cleanup, and you can work out in a situation where just the difference between that development cost and the dirty dirt and the additional costs for cleanup are what are going to be paid, and you save money that way. And that's the way this agreement was designed. We have some very explicit definitions of what are called incremental costs, and that increment means the difference between what you would spend without contamination and what the additional cost or the incremental cost is for the contamination on top of that. And that's built into the agreement as well. The costs are further defined to be what is reasonably necessary to obtain, for, to complete the development or obtain regulatory closure. That's consistent with the way the Model Toxics Control Act is set up, and those are the type of costs that are defined under the law as recoverable for those purposes of what are called remedial actions. Remedial actions are very broadly defined. They include investigation costs, they include actual cleanup costs, they even include costs for the regulatory agency oversight, which is necessary to achieve that decision of no further action, and those include both consultant and legal costs. And as I mentioned already, they're only the delta between what the developer would have had to incur for development purposes and what they would incur otherwise. And that allows the breaking up of the different buckets for how you pay for the costs, so those costs come out of ARC in many instances here, based on the agreement. You could recover them from other potentially liable parties, you can recover them from other resources, but they're different than the cost for the money that you would spend for the development, as in this instance, such as the transit money that would be potentially available for this project. And that's not going to be, for these type of cleanup costs, but it's going to cover your development costs, and so we have these different buckets here. Getting into some of the key terms of how we did the percentages based on particular portions, you've seen the map before, and I'm not going to try to navigate putting the map up next to this particular chart, but you can set the two side by side and compare the areas that are in the left-hand column, that are all the different areas associated with the development and the site, and the percentages on the right-hand column. And just for further illustration, we've provided a third column in the middle of the owners of the particular properties currently, and then those relationships. One thing to note is that BP and ARC were very resistant to paying initially, and their argument was that there were other contributions to the site in a large sense, and those are the kind of fights that often can lead to extensive litigation, and no guaranteed outcome along the lines of what we have here for the 100%. There was an option for them to resist this type of an agreement and dispute it and force us to litigation, that could have resulted in a smaller percentage for the Arco-Tully's portion of the site, pushing that on other parties. As Jeremy mentioned, there was a dry cleaner to the west, there are several gas stations in this area, there are numerous sites in the downtown Mercer Island core, and oftentimes we find that those sites can overlap. This is potentially one of those instances, and that's what accounts for the differences in percentages as we move away from that core contamination area that we can strongly attribute to BP and Arco's former gas station, then it becomes more difficult to attribute the contamination and the cleanup to any particular party. And so that's the primary driver for the different percentages as you look at the different areas or parcels for this site. Want to touch briefly on the past cost definition, so this is in Section 6 of the agreement. This would be the first reimbursement that would be provided from ARC under the agreement if entered, and it would relate to the cost that the city has spent so far on individuals like Jeremy and me to do the type of investigation and negotiation that we've been doing to get us to this point. That cost range estimate, as is provided in the packet, is presently $400,000 to $500,000. And we presented that to ARC, and that's built into the agreement now, so they're anticipating that range. It is also not restrictive. If that number is different than, than it is estimated there, there are past costs, if we can demonstrate that they're incurred prior to, and for the purposes that I've described, those would be recoverable as well. We just have to document those. I know there've been some comments made about, you know, how do you know whether you're going to get those back? And we've, I articulated the, some very objective terms by which we would measure those. Obviously, the city has incurred costs that are not the type of incremental cost covered under this agreement, but those aren't the costs that we're claiming. So we have a high level of confidence that these costs would be recovered in substantial portion, if not entirely. There is also a provision in the agreement, should we dispute that in any way among any of the parties, we have a dispute resolution provision in there as well. And that would be within 45 days after we provide the supporting documentation, so a pretty quick turnaround for an entity like BP to turn that type of cost reimbursement around. And we pushed hard for that, to shorten that up as much as possible. So I think that turns it over to Carrie to talk about next steps.
Thank you, Jeff. So, again, the city's plan now, provided that the council gives authority tonight for the interim city manager to execute this agreement and move forward. If that happens, then the city's next step is to complete acquisition of the Tully's Arco property by end of this year. That's consistent with the terms of the purchase and sale agreement, again, that the council approved back in June of 2018. The entire reason for the 18-month ensuing period has been to conduct this due diligence and to reach this stage where we've completed negotiations with Atlantic Ridgefield and have a reimbursement agreement that we consider to be a very favorable outcome under the circumstances. Again, it was negotiated without resorting to litigation, which, as Jeff said in his experience, is very unusual. And I would also note that with regard to the liability that the city has, under the Model Toxics Control Act under state law, the city already has liability to clean up with regard to this site, because we are the current owner of parcel 12, we're in the chain of title for that parcel, and under state law, that is what triggers the liability for the city.
Can I add one more thing to that?
Oh, certainly.
I appreciate you adding that point, it's a really critical part of the agreement. The other thing I forgot to mention is, under Section 8.2 of the agreement, there are release and hold harmless. I think so, yeah, I never turned it off.
That's better, if, okay, yeah, lean in a little bit.
It was a little far from it.
Super, thanks.
That ARC also has agreed to defend and indemnify the city and the owner against possible third-party claims. So if someone else comes in and says that there's some liability arising from the ARC property, that would fall on ARC as well to not only provide those costs, but also to provide the defense and incur the transactional cost of dealing with that risk. Sorry for interrupting.
That's a very helpful addition. So, again, as I said, we're going to, provided council authorizes this, move forward with completing the acquisition before the end of this year, and we're going to continue to work towards assembling the property together with A1 and a small portion of WashDOT A2. I'm just going to go back for a second just to reorient everyone to the areas of the site that I'm talking about. So, again, A2 is contemplated to be acquired by the city for purposes of the project footprint. We believe that that would be very helpful to acquire. And then, in addition, we are exploring possibly B2, but right now, definitely A2 is potential acquisition.
B2 for below grade.
Thank you, Kirsten. So Kirsten's clarifying possibly B2 for some below-grade work, underground work. So the city's development partner, as you know, for this project is Main Street Property Group, and they would be the entity that would actually be doing the redevelopment, doing the construction, the excavation work, and so we would very much be partnering with them going forward for preparation of a cleanup action plan that would hopefully minimize the costs in a way that would also achieve regulatory closure for the site, again, from either Department of Ecology or PLEA. So those are the next steps going forward, I'm going to, I think I'm going in the right direction, this is confusing, the way the buttons are. So with that, we'll take any additional questions that the council may have.
Okay, great. Benson?
First, I want to thank the seller for being so cooperative.
First, I want to thank the seller for being so cooperative and extending the due diligence a number of times, given the complexity and the amount of time it took staff to negotiate this reimbursement agreement. We heard a number, a few people in public appearances and obviously just reading the agreement itself, the agenda bill, the fact is that not everything's 100%. The fact is that there is some, a potential gap in the amount of money that we might receive in the reimbursement to cover the actual costs of cleanup. Can you, and I think in the agenda bill itself, it talks about the city maybe exploring different sources of revenue. To the extent you can elaborate, can you talk about other possible revenue sources and the status of our efforts there?
Sure, Councilmember Wong. So as the agenda bill does indicate, as you noted, it's on page three, it's the paragraph right before the heading, "Next Steps." The city has identified other potential funding sources. We have potential recovery from three different insurance carriers potentially. Again, this is to bridge any funding gap that may remain short of 100%. As Jeff and Jeremy both mentioned, there are other known polluters in the area. And so ExxonMobil to the west in particular, that's who BP Arco kept also referring to. So we're just going to continue to evaluate the various options there and explore those possibilities. So that's what we can tell you and we're definitely going to take every effort that we can to try to bridge that gap.
Lisa?
Thanks. Thanks for all your work on this. We heard some public comment about a site delineation document and not being available yet. And can you talk a little bit about that, what value it would have and the extent to which we could delay closing on this transaction until we had more certainty?
May I also add to that? We recently approved some additional site characterization work going towards I-90. So can we talk about what that's for? It's related to Councilmember Andrel's question as well.
Sure, I'll take a stab at this. So the site delineation study, another name, it has lots of different names, a Phase II Environmental Report would be another one. We've been producing draft data, we've been providing data and analysis of what it means as we go on, identify what more data we need. And it's always been contemplated that when we complete the investigation work, that's when a final report will be prepared, but we've done the bulk of it up to now. The remaining element is basically drilling in I-90, which we're working with Washa on permitting for that element. And I think after that is implemented, we would have sort of a complete data package and then we would have a final report.
But that, and the point being is that we will have already closed on the transaction by then, under what's proposed here today.
Yeah, let me add to that response from Mr. Porter. Site delineation is something that has yet to be formalized here. However, we've done the substantial majority of the work that you would do to delineate the site in order to determine what the future costs are and to figure out where the proper allocations of liability would fall. And those are built into this agreement. There has been a tremendous amount of scientific data gathered, both in the soil and the groundwater in the area. We've also, as you've talked, as Mr. Porter talked about at the beginning, we've done the phase one to determine who might be liable. And so although we don't have the formal report prepared and we're missing this piece with regard to the I-90 corridor, we have the information sufficient to provide the council with firm, objective basis on which to enter into this agreement and purchase the property.
And the extent to which we could have more time to get more information?
So Councilmember Andrel, the extent to which we could get more time, I don't know that it would, to Jeff's point, meaningfully change the percentages allocated based on the current data sets that we already have. The additional drilling work to the north is more for purposes of the cleanup action plan with obtaining regulatory closure for the site. It's not for purposes of this acquisition. Again, it's outside of the development footprint and that's a really important point. So it doesn't have to do with this particular acquisition. So I don't know that the benefit of more time is really going to change whether or not the city should proceed with this acquisition. Plus, there's the advantage of finishing it before year-end so that we don't have to deal with the increase in REIT that takes effect starting in 2020. I know in the grand scheme of things, that's a pretty small incremental additional cost that the city would have to bear. But that said, you know, there are advantages to proceeding, especially because Arco contemplates that this whole agreement does hinge on completing the acquisition of the site. That's very much embedded in this agreement.
Carrie, if I can also ask you to comment, we recently reached agreement with the sellers to extend the due diligence period, which got us to, I think, November 22nd.
It got us to this Friday.
My understanding is they were not willing to extend beyond that. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So that may get to some of your question too.
And Councilmember Andrel, let me address one more thing if I could on that. And Ms. Sand also mentioned this earlier. Additional information and more time won't change two critical components of this agreement and that, or closing the property. That is, one, the city already has liability associated with the site as a result of its ownership of the neighboring property. And two, that we are only purchasing the former Arco property and it's not, that piece of the site is very well delineated. So additional time's not going to, in any significantly, significant way, change our understanding of that parcel.
Okay, thank you.
All right, great. Celine?
I want to thank all you guys for the work that you did on this. It's been a long road and it's, we've learned a lot. I wanted to ask, because we didn't really touch on it tonight, but Mr. Porter, if you could talk about the site and what you've found and the strategies that are used within the context of redevelopment and then adjacent to, and then maybe even further away. Some of these things are very expensive, digging the dirt, removing the dirt, disposing of the dirt in the active development site. But maybe talk a bit more about the lower-cost options that would be occurring at the perimeter of the site. So that where a site is less delineated, which as you get further from the drilling sites, let's say down in I-90, how those risks are mitigated by the methods that you use?
Right. It's a great question. The, you're absolutely right. When you have the highest levels of contamination, you do, you tend to do the more aggressive types of cleanup. And digging it up is obviously one of the more common ones of doing that. There are also, if you don't want to dig it up, for instance, if you have that surface parking lot option, you can do things that are fairly aggressive and active. For instance, air sparging blows air into the subsurface, evaporates contaminants. So vapor extraction pulls those contaminants out and you tend, you treat those either by burning them or absorbing them onto carbon treatment units, things like that. That's also a fairly aggressive way. When you get away from that and you have lower concentrations, typically those types of things aren't as cost-effective. And then, and you also have less risk. You don't have potentially vapors that have to be cleaned up to develop. You might have some low-level groundwater contamination, but there aren't any drinking water wells. So you don't, you have very lower risks. The state still requires that you do something about that. And so there are some less aggressive, but still active ways of dealing with those. For instance, injecting things that provide oxygen into the, into the ground. Those enhance the natural bacteria in the ground and these petroleum contaminants, gasoline, are actually naturally degraded fairly easily. And sometimes just adding some oxygen helps them go away more quickly. At the very edges of the plume where you have very concentrations of contaminants that are just slightly above the state cleanup level, that's where monitor natural attenuation, which is basically just monitoring it, making sure it's not expanding, it's not migrating any farther, that nobody's being exposed to it. And that after a certain number of years, it actually goes away because, as I said, things naturally degrade in the subsurface. And so particularly when you're looking at I-90, there aren't any exposure pathways there. There's nobody living there, there's nobody, nobody digging into the, into the groundwater that's 10 feet below the roadway and being exposed to the contaminants. There's also, it's really, also really hard to go in and install infrastructure, wells and types of things to clean it up. That's where monitoring by itself is usually accepted by the state. And whereas back at the source property, that's where the state expects you to be more aggressive to dig things up or to treat and destroy the contaminants.
So in your assessment of the site, just thinking in terms of the broader picture, we live on an island, we're surrounded by a lake, the undeveloped sites within our town center are mostly polluted. I mean, there's not a lot of undeveloped space that wasn't a former gas station or dry cleaners. I mean, would you characterize this site redevelopment and subsequent cleanup in this settlement agreement as a big win, a little win, a big service to the environment?
Yeah.
Just your high level on that?
I mean, this is a great opportunity because here, there is a fair amount of contamination. It goes fairly deep. It is hard to clean it up here and develop, cleaning up with development is a great opportunity to make something go away a whole lot faster than it otherwise would.
Counsel, are there any further questions? Benson?
I was curious, as far as how deep do you think you have to go? Have you been able to determine that?
For excavation. Yeah, the highest concentrations at this site and soil are generally 40 feet and above, which is also about the depth of development. So it correlates very well with the projected depths of the development as far as removing the highest concentrations. There is contamination that gets down to as far as 60 feet. Those are, it's the, that's below the water table, that's lower concentrations at which monitoring or something less aggressive is more appropriate to treat what remains in place. So to be clear, the development won't get out everything that's contaminated, but it will get out the highest concentrations. And we've built into our cleanup cost estimates, understanding that, you know, when you're developing the site, you'll take out the vast majority, you might have to do a little bit more removal if you have something beyond the limits that's high. And you have, also have to do some, perhaps some groundwater treatment and some vapor treatment in the long term. And that's built into the assumptions and the costs.
I actually have one.
Well, I'm going to ask a follow-up question then, if you don't mind?
Sure.
Okay. So if the city, for some reason, were to determine that it actually wanted to go deeper, you know, which is arguably an additional floor of commuter parking, would that, would those costs then essentially the cleanup costs be covered by this agreement, even though, as you say, it's not as extreme per se, but yet that dirt would still need to be removed?
So I think that's a legal question about how the agreement is cast, so I'll take that one. And as to the property, which is where there's 100%, yes. There's no limit in the agreement on how deep you decide to go. If you determine for purposes of redevelopment and for regulatory approval that it's necessary to do that and that's part of your plan, then you will have the opportunity to seek 100% of those costs for the environmental incremental component associated with going deeper.
Okay, so it's just for the basis or the purpose of an estimate then, that it was assumed that 40 feet would be roughly sufficient?
That's correct.
Okay.
And there is also, that estimate includes 20%? What was your contingency on that?
Yeah, 20% contingency, yeah.
Okay, great, thanks. Benson?
I had a question on the monitoring along the I-90 corridor that, again, it's referenced in the agenda bill. That's a cost that's going to be 100% covered by ARC or is that, is that part of another percentage? This is...
That's, that would be the 85%. That's going to be a groundwater investigation and so that would be under the 85% component of the agreement.
And how long is that monitoring likely to last? Is that, it wasn't quite clear when I was looking at the...
The, you don't know until you do the first sampling. So we're putting in the wells, we'll see if there's any contamination there. If those wells are clean, it doesn't have to go very long. You'd probably get through the development and the initial remediations, confirm it's still clean. If it is contaminated, that could go on for some number of years while, when you've cleaned up the source property, it eventually gets down and cleans up those wells.
Okay, I've got, actually got a question and that is, you know, we've been talking essentially about a timeline that implies we have a developer, he's ready, she's ready to show up with, you know, the right equipment, with the right removal process, et cetera. But then there's this other piece called the state and that's Department of Ecology and any other number of players with acronyms that I apologize, I don't necessarily remember. Can we assume, based on your experience, that the state can keep up with the work being done by the developer? Or could we imagine that there would be additional lags in the process on the basis of the state being understaffed, backlog of work, et cetera, et cetera? Just, again, this is based purely on your experience.
And it's probably helpful for both Mr. Porter and for me to address that because we both encounter the state in this regard. In general, yes. Our experience is that the process of determining the ultimate development plan, negotiating that, getting it going forward, often parallels the timing that's necessary to engage the appropriate regulatory agency and move forward. After that, on a situation like this where you have a significant redevelopment, it's for the public good, it's for transportation purposes, it's a municipality, they will work very hard, even despite staffing issues, to try to accommodate and not become the drag on the process. And so we've had very good experience with those type of relationships, particularly when they're formed early. And so as, as we get to the point where we know that this is going forward, we know who the developer is and we can lock the plan in, that's the point to engage the state agencies. That's also the reason that we have these alternate options for state agencies under the agreement, whether it's Ecology or the Pollution Liability Insurance Agency, PLEA, that PLEA was created recently for the purposes of taking up some of the slack that was resulting from Ecology backlogs. And that's why it may be the appropriate entity here because it's intended to be more efficient and have more resources available to address the need for speed. There's still some open questions about how we approach that and whether that's the right agency or Ecology is the right agency. But we built in that flexibility for that very reason, to provide some assurance that we could move along expeditiously and meet our other goals for funding.
Who determines which agency?
The parties, in part, the agencies themselves and the parties. It'd be, it'd be a negotiated outcome.
Okay.
I don't know if I said anything inconsistent with your experience?
No, that's, that was pretty good. I would also just say that there's some differences in like how formal their oversight is, like we get to choose whether it's a voluntary cleanup, a independent cleanup with less oversight, voluntary cleanup with some oversight and agreement and nodding along as you go, or a more formal cleanup where they are lockstep with you and there's a more process to it. So that can be factored into, the choice can be made, choose which path based on schedule and what will work for the city and the developer.
And the last thing I would say to that point is, the regulatory closure component can take some additional time, but your actual execution of your redevelopment, that part can move along. And so even if you find that there's something at the periphery, to do the redevelopment, you're not going to have to have all of the answers to what's going on in the I-90 corridor. That can trail behind the components of the plan that are necessary for the redevelopment. And so they don't have to move in complete lockstep.
Super, thank you. I just wanted to say one quick word of thanks. I actually wouldn't even be a quick word of thanks. And, you know, the extent to which there's people here in the audience and people watching at home and who will be obviously studying what this whole session has been about, the complexity, I think, far outweighed what anybody who's been involved anticipated. Tremendous amount of time, of course, from the people here at the table, Carrie, both as an employee and now in her current capacity, but just a tremendous thanks to a staff who probably has a whole new level of expertise that they never anticipated developing, a lot of patience and a lot of teamwork. So thank you for getting us here tonight. So yeah, we'd like to hear a motion.
So with that, I move to authorize the interim city manager to execute the environmental remediation reimbursement agreement with Atlantic Ridgefield Company and the seller of the 7810 Southeast 27th Street property in substantially the form attached as Exhibit 1 for the city's proposed commuter parking and mixed-use project.
It's been first and second. Do you want to speak to it?
The only thing I'll say to it, because we have a couple of members missing tonight, is that we, Wendy and Dave, were both strong contributors to this. Dave especially, Dave Wiesentiner, who's probably watching us in Malaysia right now.
Probably not.
But I want to personally thank him for the way he brought to the discussion. He had a lot of family business background in this type of thing, and it was nice to have that on the council.
All right, counsel, any further discussion? All right. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, hearing none. It passes 5-0. So thank you, team. I mean, again, thank you doesn't suffice, but I guess more work continues as we go forward. So, super. Counsel, how are you feeling? Want to keep going? All right. I think we'll give them just a minute to go ahead and take down the table. Maybe, should we take a break then while they're... I think it's, well, yeah, I'm seeing, hearing a request for a five-minute break, so let's come back, you know. I'd say 8:33, but I'm sure it won't be exactly.
Recently retired, I was just giving him a hard time, from the city of Redmond, but is working for MRSC and supporting a number of cities like Mercer Island. Former president of the Washington Government Financial Officers Association, and he served on their executive board. And this is one of the things that, you know, I was particularly intrigued about when we brought him on, because he's done quite a bit of analysis and policy work that will be really helpful for us. He has a CPA, he went to the University of Puget Sound, and as I mentioned, he's currently consulting with MRSC. For those of you contemplating retirement, this is not retirement. So Mike is on contract now with the city, and we've asked him to do a couple of things. First of all, just globally, to take a look at our finance department. This is one of the organizational assessments that we're performing right now. It includes things like our staffing structure, our business systems, policies, and more. I see I have a typo there on that slide. Also providing support to Luan, who I'll formally introduce in just a moment, who's serving as our interim finance director for anything that she might need. Our former finance director managed like the long-range forecasting, so that's something that Mike will be supporting us on in the interim. He's also planning to join us for the 2020 council planning session to support what I think will be a robust discussion on the city's long-term finances. And then other things, right? The catch-all, anything else that comes up during the assessment that may not be directly housing finance, but certainly is related, things like payroll, processing online payments, et cetera. So welcome, Mike, and thank you for saying yes and answering the phone when we called. Also introducing tonight for the first time is Luan Tuttle. She's our interim finance director. Thank you, Luan. She's been with the city for two decades, and she actually started here in 1998, fresh out of kindergarten, as our accounting clerk. Kidding, of course. She has served in every single role in the finance department except director. So we wanted to check that box, right? There was a great opportunity. Luan is, I'm so grateful to her for stepping into this role, considering the turnover we have had in the finance department. So between Luan and Mike and another contract employee, we are almost staffed up temporarily. Anyway, at this point, I will turn the presentation over to Luan, and thank you again, Mike, for joining us.
So just a process question. Do you want me to open the public hearing after the presentation from Luan?
It's your pleasure. I was just asking Luan. I understand previously we've opened the public hearing at the beginning and then received the presentation.
Why don't I go ahead and open it then? And go ahead and have you give the presentation, and then if there is any public appearances, we'll...
Oh, I forgot about the podium. Forgot about the public hearing. Apologies.
Well, maybe we could...
Is there anyone here?
Is there... Is anyone, would anybody like to indicate an interest in speaking at the public hearing? So maybe we hold on the podium. So I'm just going to officially say then, I'm now opening the public hearing on the 2019-2020 mid-biennium budget. The guidelines are the same as appearances, and when we get there, it will be, please speak audibly and limit your comments to three minutes. So we'll go ahead and have the presentation. I'll see then if there's anybody who wants to speak after we have the presentation.
So again, Luan Tuttle, your interim finance director. And we'll just go, we're going to go straight into the financial status report for the third quarter. Financial status report, we're going to basically follow along with the Exhibit 1 with your agenda bill, and we're going to just put some slides up here that are really high-level and intended to sort of go along with the write-up that you received with the agenda bill. Again, in general, we're going to go through the general fund at a high level and dig into some of the bigger revenues and, again, with expenses. We'll look at utility funds really quickly. I'll open it up for any questions on any of the other funds, and then we'll go straight into budget adjustments. And you do have a ton of action items associated at the end, so at any point you have questions, just go ahead and jump in. So general fund, again, this is super high-level, and what you're looking at here is 2019 actuals versus the adopted budget as amended. And then we throw in there 2018's actual just for comparative purposes. And basically what we're looking at is for revenues, we're trending a little bit behind. We expect to be at the third quarter 75% through 2019's budget year, sort of three-fourths of the year. Revenues typically do trend behind. We're at 66% for revenues. That is predominantly because of property taxes. So property taxes, as you know, you pay your first half in April, May, and the second half typically comes in October, November. So we do anticipate this will come back up to the budgeted levels when we start receiving those property taxes, and they are coming in strong right now. For expenditures, we're right where we expect to be, at about 73% of budget. A little bit lower than that 75%, but that's typical for us at this time of year. So we'll dig into some of our bigger revenues within the general fund, so outside of proper tax, which again is going to hit budget like it always does, but a little bit behind the timeline. The next biggest one is for us, sales tax. This slide is showing year-to-date for 2018 as compared to year-to-date September 30th for 2019. As you can see, we're pretty close to where we were in the prior year. It's down about $16,000. Most of that in the construction sector. We do see retail holding strong, and some of that, I think, is due to the new rules on online taxes. So the ruling that remote sales now have to pay sales taxes, data of Washington, we are sort of seeing that hold strong for us. Utility taxes in the general fund, this category of revenues is just what it says. So it's PSE, it's cellular companies, it's cable utility, it's utility taxes on our own water, sewer, and stormwater utility. This one's trending pretty close to budget, slightly behind at 71%. That's mostly due to Puget Sound Energy. They've had some rate reductions. And also sort of, this is weather contingent, so we do anticipate it will come back up when it gets colder and people start paying higher bills. Permits and land use revenue, this one is trending a little bit behind budget, but it is pretty comparable to where we were in the prior year at 2018. The one category that's, I think, a little bit behind where we anticipated it would be compared to budget is commercial. We had sort of projected some bigger commercial projects starting, and just timing-wise, we do anticipate them coming in in 2020, but it is pulling that actual line a little bit down compared to budget. No major concerns on that, just it's going to be a timing issue and something we're paying attention to. Before I move on to expenditures, any questions on general fund revenues overall?
Yeah, Benson?
Luan, I had a question on the utility fund. I was just kind of curious about the interest earnings, they seem to be quite...
On utility funds, or...
On the utility funds.
And we can get to that when they get to utility.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We're sort of on general fund revenues at this point?
Sorry.
No worries. All right. We'll move on to expenditures for the general fund. This is just a different look than what's in the actual financial status report. I think in the report write-up itself, we showed expenditures by department and percentage spent. This slide shows expenditures for the general fund more by category. So salaries and wages, obviously our biggest line item. That top green line is the 2019 original budget, so the original budget that was adopted before any amendments. The next line, that sort of light blue line, is the adjusted budget, so you see it a little bit lower in most categories, and that is due to the reductions that the council approved in the first quarter. And then the dark blue line is year-to-date actuals. Our biggest category is at 78% for salaries and wages. You should know that that includes overtime. It also includes sort of any cash-outs for term employees, and we've had quite a few retirements and quite a few sort of people leaving the city, so that is pushing that a little bit above that 75%. But we don't anticipate it will go over budget. We'll be, we'll be still probably at or under budget by year-end. Benefits are trending right at budget. Some good news looking toward the future on benefits is that we did just get our rates from AWC, and they are coming in for most non-reps significantly less than what we budgeted, which is all good news. We do anticipate to sort of see that trend line continuing to be under budget for 2020. Everything else is pretty much within budget or below. Questions on the general fund?
Saleem? Saleem.
I don't want to raise alarm bells, but with the number of open positions that we've had and with the number of months that they've been open, do I need to be concerned that we're running at budget to plan when we really should be far under it unless there's some other one-time expenses that are eating into them?
I think the big story on salaries and benefits being where they are is the overtime, both for police and more importantly, for fire. So we do have sort of the minimum staffing requirements. We have had people, well, we have retirements in police. We've had people leave in fire, so your fire marshal left. So backfilling those positions always comes with overtime. I think that's really what's pushing this trend line over more than anything else.
Well, that would still be alarming if all else were equal, right? I mean, if we didn't have the vacancies that we have, we would be dealing with a significant overage at this point. Because we didn't.
Potentially, but some of those vacancies are also causing the overtime, so.
Yeah, many of the vacancies, I would say, outside of police and fire, would you agree?
Causing overtime?
No.
Oh. The vacancies are probably keeping us right at budget at this point. And again, the vacancies haven't all been for the whole year. Many of, you know, there were some in the beginning of there, some in the middle of the year, and some in the third quarter, you know. So it's, I think, not fair to say we should have a bigger sort of gap versus budget when those vacancies haven't been for the entire year. I do anticipate in 2020, when some of those, if they remain status quo, we will see more savings than we're seeing for 19.
Yeah, I'd expect so. Okay, thank you.
Just wanted to chime in here and note, one of the things that we're working on, one of the organizational assessments, is our fire department and our fire operations. We are out for an RFP to select a consultant. I expect that decision to be made shortly. And we've asked, we will be asking our consultant to look at particularly the overtime issue in the fire department and to explore if there's another way to tackle that more efficiently, lower cost.
Benson.
Can I, I have a question on, actually, you know, it's always good to be under budget, I guess, when it comes to expenses. But on the public works department, so it's sixty, can you explain that? Is it a matter of projects not starting up or things getting delayed?
So Jason Ketter, Public Works Director. So this, which Councilman Wong is referring to, is within the right-of-way team. And so what happens is on our contracted services for some of our maintenance, it takes the first part of the year to get up and running with those contracted services. I'd also say the Snomageddon event that happened in February caused ripple effect for some of our work that took place this year as well. So just, we will catch up. It's just we're seeing a lag in that expenditure rating.
Okay. We'll move on to the utility funds. And again, this is just really high-level where we're at with the utility funds overall. And it's just revenues versus expenditures. There's not huge story here. They are trending on budget. And we anticipate them to stay within budget as we go forward. The water funds revenues are higher than that 75% threshold. They're closer to 90%. And that is due to the high volumes of water used in the summer months. It's really related to irrigation that typically tapers off in the fourth quarter. So it'll be sort of right on budget.
I had that question regarding the interest earnings. I was just curious.
Yeah, interest earnings are across all funds that earn interest are higher than budgeted. And that's just indicator of, you know, higher returns on investments.
There's no, I mean, as far as the investments, I'm curious, where are all the funds invested?
Most of our funds are invested with this Washington State investment pool. We do have some short-term investments outside of that, but those are, they're getting called right now. So it's less and less over time. So most of ours are sitting with the state.
Actually, so at some point, you know, now or later, you guys decide, capital projects, you know, they continue to be below projections. And, you know, I understand is a direct result of staff spending a significant amount of time on the SCADA system, meter replacement, booster chlorination, et cetera, et cetera. So is this just essentially the projects are just getting pushed out? Or are we expecting to see some sort of catch-up that would happen next year? Meaning there's going to be some new level of momentum that's created. So where do we end the biennium?
For public works projects, you'll see a combination. So in particular, on the SCADA project, that's our supervisor, control, and data acquisition project. That is the, basically, alarm and monitoring system that runs our water and sewer systems with the departure of our IGS director this last year. There was a big cybersecurity component and software side that had significant impact to that project. In addition, it's a fairly complex project. So that project has, is under, it's in design, it's underway, but it is delayed because of just the legwork taking it up to speed. Some of the other projects, though, that are associated with it on the sewer and water side, they're all tied to that SCADA design. So for example, monitoring our pump stations, the design of the booster chlorination station, all of that's tied to our control system. And so as the SCADA system progresses, those other projects will catch up. But they are lagging at this point in time until that design catches up.
But in essence, what you would assume is that everything just kind of got pushed out a couple of months?
Yes.
So you would see that going into the next biennium?
Yes.
Okay.
Saleem? Is there somewhere in here that I can see the one-time expenses that you're talking about that are skewing the general fund expense side? So if it's retirements, if it's vacation payout, I don't care what department it's in, like, is there a place I can find that number?
It's not in the financial status report per se. Those are numbers we could generate. But no, it's not at that level of detail included in this budget-to-actual update for the mid-biennium.
Okay. If you could send that to me at some point, that'd be great.
I just wanted to clarify, do you want to see the breakdown of the employment line specifically that's higher than projected or something else?
I assume it's going to be employee-related.
Salaries and wages.
And it's probably going to be, I mean, one-time is going to be retirements or payouts or?
Perfect.
I don't know what, but.
Benson.
Actually, this is a follow-up on the mayor's question regarding the delay in the capital improvement projects. I assume, Jason, maybe this is for you. It sounds like the delays aren't, you know, they're maybe in terms of months. I'm not sure if they're in terms of years. But I guess the concern I would have is whether or not, as a result of the delay, is there safety issues? Are there, you know, other concerns that you have because of the delay?
We are actively working to address those concerns that we have. I think before we went forward with these projects, we took some intermediate steps to address some of those risks within our systems. And we're in a good place right now to work through the design process. So yes, there's always risk in your water and sewer system to some degree, but I feel like we are in a good spot right now to move forward with these projects at this point in time.
Okay.
Jason, while you're up there, can you shed any light now that Recology has taken over the contract? What, if anything, you've been able to do with excess staff? I don't know if I'll call capacity that no longer empties the garbage cans being emptied.
So Debbie Maranese is referring to the 34 cans in the town center, which, in which Recology per the contract is now servicing. So what that is allowing our right-of-way team to do in particular, which is to focus their attention on other maintenance activities that have been delayed. So I wouldn't call one specific project, but they're moving quicker into some of the other responses by freeing up that time every week by not having to service those 34 cans in the town center. So things like street sweeping in the town center, street sweeping the Mercer Ways, in particular, it's the leaf season right now. So work crew members are on the streets taking care of those storm drains and streets to keep them free and clear of debris.
Is this the same right-of-way team that would deal with the medians at Allen Crest Way?
Yes, it would. I will say the 34 cans, I'll get back to you on the specific number of hours per week, but it is very, so during the summer months, during the peak season.
You don't have to get back to me on that. But would you say that that frees up enough capacity to take care of the medians at Allen Crest Way?
Let me compare the numbers and I'll get back to you.
Thanks.
Yeah, it sounds like it would be a discussion as to where those hours would actually go.
It's a good conversation to have.
All right, previously scheduled program.
Okay, I don't have any more slides on the budget-to-actuals. We intentionally sort of left and deep-dive on REITs and the capital funds for January when we're going to come back to you with a more in-depth look at our capital program and where we are with REITs and sort of kicking off capital budgeting. So stay tuned for that. There is no concerns at this point on REIT. It is trending with budget, as are all of our capital funds. Any questions on any of the other funds that are outside of general fund and utilities before we move on to the action items?
Just one. Yeah, so we've got Saleem, then Lisa, and then I'll take a turn.
Is there any quick update on thrift shop pilot projects? And, you know, the revenues generated with that that you care to touch on? Or you want to leave that for another day?
I don't have any specifics. I can tell you that their revenue is trending above budget, so all good news.
Lisa.
Thanks, I just lost my place. But I thought I saw that the contingency fund is above the budget projection.
Correct.
And what, to what do we owe that windfall?
Interest earnings.
Okay. Thank you.
So quick question on the capital improvement and technology and equipment. It says, "Staff vacancies continue to have an impact on the ability to complete planned project work. Staff are exploring alternative options to deliver these projects." Can you give me just a couple of sentences? Because that sounds like it's either a nothing burger or there's something going on there, because.
A specific to technology?
Yeah.
And again, they, we sort of lost the IT director. So I do think it's a team that is going through some transition. I don't know that there's a specific plan on that, but.
Especially when it says, "Alternative options to deliver these projects." I'm guessing that means outsourcing, but.
Yeah, absolutely. So for example, the SCADA project where the IT, the IT director is going to have a large role in that. We've had to go out for consultant services to help fill in some of that. The institutional knowledge. Yeah, the expertise necessary for the project. So I would say that's specific to each of the IT projects that were in their work plan. They're evaluating what options they can and can't do in-house versus contracted services.
Because the correlation I would make was when there was a reference to cybersecurity and the importance not only to SCADA, but to some of the other projects, I'm sure, that are ongoing in the city. And the question would be the extent to which these vacancies are potentially leaving the city vulnerable.
Actually, IT staff is focusing their priorities on things like cybersecurity, which leaves not as much time as previously available for project management. In fact, that's why I wanted to pop up here and just make a comment about our workforce and how we're adapting positions and the things that we're considering as we have position vacancies. And one of those is, project management requires specialized one-time resources. And that's most appropriate, or oftentimes appropriate, I shouldn't say most appropriate, to contract that work out. We're asking our IT staff, and Ally can chime in here, to focus on the ongoing work and things like cybersecurity, which require frequent touches and focus. And so that's how we're looking at adapting with these vacancies.
Okay, thanks. Benson.
Jesse, just as a quick follow-up. So, you know, in your guesstimate, I mean, is it less expensive for the city to operate this way as far as retaining consultants on these specific projects as opposed to if we had a staff person?
That's a hard question to answer because it really depends on the area of expertise. In some cases, we don't have the area of expertise, and it is better to outsource one-time project work. Sometimes if the volume of project work is such that it's long-term and ongoing, it does make sense to sustain a staff's position. I can point to the project managers in public works where the work isn't, it's it's within a specific area of expertise consistent enough that we should sustain project team members in that capacity. So it's a little bit of a mixed bag. Go ahead.
And I think the other, the other side of it is so much of what we're doing is becoming electronic. It's online, it's digital, it's, you know, we don't, everything we're moving to is online. So in that case, you do need someone with some IT experience to know how this will integrate with all of our other systems. So our former IT director played a large role in all of these projects in knowing how that works with all the other projects that we have, all the other business systems that we have. So without that expertise, we are then having to hire for that. So in some cases, not in all cases. So it's not just necessarily the technical work of the water meter. It's also the technical, you know, information technology piece of it, too, so.
And I want to also comment, we had a lot of staff vacancies in 2019, probably far more than we were anticipated to have a year ago. So we're still evaluating, and we've had to quickly adapt, which means we have more work to do. So that conversation is continuing, particularly around how to provide IT services.
All right.
Sorry, just a quick note on that, because you had a good discussion. And I think Ally, who has some role in overseeing IT, didn't really touch on it. We have to accept that as we have had this level of attrition and we have this level of vacancies, that we're going to have to lower our standards. And what we're seeing at this point in the financials is that having 20 open positions and doubling or tripling our attrition rate is not causing efficiency in the city. We're spending the same amount of money, right? We've got these one-time costs, we don't know what they are. But when we look at our run rate on our budget, it's not cheaper. We're just running everybody harder, getting less, probably less service levels than we had before. And we're going to be doing less. When you say, you know, connecting systems, we're going to have to look at systems and say, can we really afford to connect this? Can we really, can we implement something and have a cross-connection to something? The answer right now is probably more likely no than it is yes, even contracting that out. So I think that there is a realization that, you know, this is a fundamental change for the city and that 19 is going to be an outlier year. We have some one-time expenses. But the job of coming up with a budget for the next biennium is going to be some tough, tough work.
Well said. I have no further comments.
Okay.
Okay. So the next slides are really just about some of the action items. I have just a little bit of additional information. And then we'll turn it back to the council on all those action items. Budget adjustments, they are broken down into, once this council has previously approved. That's this slide. Again, these are previous approvals as recent as the last council meeting on November 4th. So these are the youth and family services grant awards. Basically 15 months to get us through the end of 2020. So that's the portion of those two grant awards. And then an inter-fund transfer between the contingencies fund and the town center parking facilities for additional due diligence, I believe, and environmental work. Couple of budget adjustments that the council has not seen prior to this. The top two for the general fund, $20,000 per year for 19 and 20 for the Parks and Rec Department. This is a grant, a King County Stay Active, Get Active Stay Active grant, to restore some of the fitness and recreation for community programs for youth, seniors, and families. The police department, like you heard in the city manager's report, received a $20,000 private donation. They hope to use that to restore some community-based outreach programs. And then for public works and the stormwater fund, we have a $50,000 ongoing grant. So this is a continuation of a grant from the Department of Ecology for stormwater capacity work.
So do these all then have to come back to council for, like, either formal approval or budget amending ordinances?
So these are included in the budget amending ordinance that is part of your packet. I think it's the final Exhibit 9.
It's quite a stack that we have.
Yeah.
So is this the end of the presentation?
Yeah, I have just a couple more slides specific to a couple of action items. So NORCOM is the first one. We're set to adopt, hopefully tonight, the resolution for NORCOM's 2020 budget. This is our proportionate share, or the city's proportionate share of NORCOM's 2020 budget. It is, for the first time in history, I think, going down in actual dollars. And then that final column, the $87,000, is the savings for budget. So we did anticipate an increase, not a decrease. So in real dollars, it's $51,000. As compared to what is budgeted for 2020, the saving is $87,000. And then lastly, we have utility rate resolutions. We do have a member of our utility board here, the vice chair, in case he wants to say anything. Again, these rates have all gone through the utility board and have been approved for an average single-family residence. The overall rate impact for all four of these rates is roughly $16.05 per every two-month bill or a 4.7% overall increase. And that's all. And that's all I have. Oh, property tax, the big one. Property tax. Again, I will remind the council that the 1% increase is budgeted for 2020. There are two ordinances required in order to authorize this to go forward. Tried to sort of break out what that 1% applies to, and it is the prior-year levy plus the levy lid lifts. New construction is on top of that, and so that's that final column. So, the overall increase for the 1% is the $136,000 you see at the bottom. And that's all I have.
Can you tell us what the new construction equates to in terms of percentage, year-to-date?
No. So, it's $200,000, which is an estimate, because we currently, at this point, only have a preliminary estimate from the county. We do, we estimate that high, because if it comes down, we can always call the county and say to levy less, based on what the actual numbers are for new construction. But we can't say levy more. So, the estimate is higher than we anticipate, but it gives us that flexibility to capture all of it.
Okay, great. So, council, I still need to open the public hearing, or at least ask anybody if they would like to speak at the public hearing. So, I will now. Is there anyone who wishes to address council? All right, seeing none, public hearing is now closed. So, with that, the extent to which anybody's ready, I welcome some motions.
I'll move to pass Resolution Number 1562, which approves NORCOM's 2020 budget allocation to the City of Mercer Island.
All right, all in favor signify. I'll say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, passes?
I'll move to pass Resolution Number 1563, which establishes classifications of water users and a schedule of charges for water usage, a schedule of rates for fire service, a schedule of special service charges, meter and service installation charges, and connection charges effective January 1, 2020, and thereafter.
Lisa or Bruce?
Either one.
All right, Lisa, what I see Deb pointing to, okay. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes?
I move to pass Resolution Number 1564, which establishes rates and connection charges for sewage disposal services provided by the City of Mercer Island, effective January 1, 2020, and thereafter.
I'll second.
All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? All right, passes?
I'll move to pass Resolution Number 1565, which establishes the bimonthly service charge for storm and surface water services provided by the City of Mercer Island, effective January 1, 2020, and thereafter.
I'll second that.
All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. And a big thank you to the utility board for the work that they've done on these, and thank you for being here tonight.
I'll move to pass Resolution Number 1566, which establishes the bimonthly utility fee for the emergency medical and ambulance services supplied by the City of Mercer Island, effective January 1, 2020, and thereafter.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, it passes?
I'll move to suspend the City Council Rules of Procedure 6.3, requiring a second reading of an ordinance.
Second. I seconded it. Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, it passes?
I move to adopt Ordinance Number 19-14, which establishes the amount of property taxes to be levied for the year 2020.
Second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. We're almost there. There's another page.
Get to it before anybody else does. Move to adopt Ordinance Number 19-15, which identifies the dollar amount and percentage increases of the regular property tax levy and the levy lid lifts for the year 2020.
Second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, passes?
Move to adopt Ordinance Number 19-17, amending the 2019, 2020 budget.
All in favor, oh, I'll second it. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, it passes. Now, we have completed that section, yes, definitely, well done, and thank you, you won. And team, that was definitely a great team effort. So, if I understand correctly, we now move to ARCH. We go back to ARCH. And so, this would be AB 5627. And this is the ARCH 2020 work plan and budget. So, we did have a study session on this preceding the regular council meeting, or the start of the regular agenda. Does anybody feel the need for any refresh from Allison, or... Okay, hearing none. Lisa, you asked to have it pulled. Do you want to go ahead and give it a start?
Sure, I just felt like I wasn't sure how much public would be here for the study session versus how much public would be here for the regular business. And I wanted to make sure there was an opportunity for people to hear discussion about it. I do think the study session was probably better attended. I just wanted it pulled, because I wanted to express concerns that I had about the administrative budget, both the timing of it, the volume of the increase, I guess it's more than both, it's more than two things. The timing, the amount of the increase, and the, at least my perception on the surface, that it is a disproportionate amount to be asking the City of Mercer Island to pay, based on the services that we receive and the number of units that we have. And that's particularly with regard to the amount allocated to King County, which is not on the same per capita basis as the, as the city allocations of the budget. That said, I guess I feel boxed in to having to approve this, because we would be in breach of the agreement, not having given them a year's notice that we were going to, wanting to potentially back out or change the terms. So, I feel like this is something that we should definitely take a harder look at in 2020 as part of our work plan, as to whether this is something that really adequately advances the goals of the city, meets our legal requirements, and, you know, is the right way to spend citizens' money. I think we definitely need to look at it hard on the voluntary component of the contribution. But I just, I just wanted to have it out there for discussion and see how other council members felt about this.
Anybody want to comment? Is that, Bruce, is that a yes? Okay.
So, I think it is, you know, a bad surprise to see a significant increase like this in the budget. There's no doubt about that. However, I think we, as a group, were all quite concerned when the news broke about the problems that, with adherence to ARCH guidelines that came out, whenever that was, quite a few months ago. And what we're seeing now is what appears to me to be a wise response to that. And the fact that they needed, they were understaffed clearly, and have taken action to increase their staffing, to get it to where it needs to be, so that they can manage their units effectively, is smart action. So, to me, this is a bit painful, in that it is a significant increase, but it's an appropriate increase for what it's achieving for us. In terms of number of units that we have, I don't think there's a we and they, in this sense. And as, you know, the deputy pointed out, at least through your questioning, two things. One, it's a lot cheaper for us to be in ARCH than to be trying to go it ourselves. And secondly, units aren't, their units and our units, the units are, in many cases, much more cost-effectively placed in other jurisdictions, rather than here in our community with the high costs that we have. So, I think we benefit in multiple ways from the partnership that we have with the other cities through ARCH. So, I'm strongly in favor of continuing this relationship we have, and hope that the council in the future will keep, you know, keep some of these thoughts in mind as they try to decide what to do.
Benson?
I'm going to vote in favor of the recommendation, as far as the approval of the budget. But I think Councilmember Henaral's questions, and some of my concerns that I raised as well, and also Councilmember Bassett just raised now, I think it is, it is a significant raise, increase in our budget, was, again, a little bit of a surprise. I think what was helpful during the study session is that a lot of questions, a lot of concerns about the current ILA, and perhaps how ARCH has been operated, were expressed. And I hope that, Evan, when you go back to the next meeting, you'll be able to share some of the concerns that have been raised, and also concerns about just the need to take another look, which apparently they are, in terms of amending the ILA. I mean, there are a number of provisions that are surprisingly lacking. And so, anyway, I think that the discussion was a good one. I also want to just emphasize the fact that Mercer Island does benefit from ARCH, and that the ARCH approach is a regional approach to deal with affordable housing issues. It actually is a model that's being used in South King County right now. They're trying to emulate the ARCH in terms of trying to address affordable housing. I just learned, I guess maybe it was, I'm not sure from whom, but Shoreline is looking at that as well, and maybe other parts of King County. So, we're in this together, and it's just a matter of finding the best way to leverage our money. I mean, money is limited. And so, I think ARCH is a good way of doing it, but I think they definitely need to continue to implement the other best practices that were identified by the consultant. And so, I'm looking forward to them being more robust in their enforcement procedures.
Celine, anything? All right, Evan and I speak to this. I think, you know, what I'm hearing is that there's some principled concerns, and then obviously operationally. So, let's also recognize that when ARCH was formed, the issues and complexity around affordable housing were probably not nearly as great as they are right now. And it seems apparent that there's the opportunity to go back and, for some of the agreement and the mechanisms that are in place, to grow in sophistication, if not in terms of robustness. And so, let's take this as an opportunity to be constructive. But underlying that, I am a deep believer in ARCH. And, you know, as came up earlier, in 2012, King County decided not to assign numbers per municipality. These are King County's objectives, these are King County's goals, and Mercer Island needs to be a part of that, whether they sit on Mercer Island, or in Bellevue, or in Redmond, or elsewhere. That's something that, you know, the greater forces can determine the best economic use of every dollar that we contribute. So, let's not get caught up too much in exactly how many units are here or there, but let's look at the need that the region has and ask whether or not this is proportionate to the role and the contribution that Mercer Island can be making. As far as it being a surprise, just reminding everybody, we had the chance a couple months ago to look at this, and unfortunately, it got pushed out of that study session. So, it was a surprise for tonight, but it wasn't a surprise in terms of having been delivered to us, or a surprise to us in terms of having discussed. But nonetheless, clearly, it caught a number of people unaware. So, I, too, am going to support this, and I'm going to encourage the next council to continue to support a regional approach to addressing the affordable housing crisis. Whether that lands for rent or for purchased units here on Mercer Island, to me, is really not the point. The point is to address the incredible need that there is out there, and to do it in the most efficient and effective way possible. So, with that being said, unless there's further comment, you want to comment?
Yeah, just one, one other thing, I guess. Another concern that was driving me, which is perhaps somewhat mitigated, is, you know, that it took this public expose for ARCH to kind of finally realize they needed better management, and better oversight, and better staffing. But I understand they are under new leadership now. And so, I don't want to, you know, prejudge the new director's ability to kind of right the ship. And, you know, the other thing is, I have heard, and I'm persuaded, really, that we have legal obligations that we have to fulfill, that ARCH, even a somewhat flawed ARCH, allows us to meet those requirements in a way that's cheaper than self-staffing it at the city. And so, if anything kind of tips me on this issue, it's going to be that. I did have one other question, and though that would be the source of the additional funds, the $16,000 or $17,000, where would that come from?
There's a couple of different options that we've identified. One would be the additional revenues that we're anticipating from the new sales tax authorized by HB 1406, that cannot directly fund ARCH operations, but it can fund the Housing Trust Fund. And as I mentioned in my presentation during the study session, $50,000 has been budgeted for the Housing Trust Fund from the General Fund. So, it would be possible to replace some of those dollars with 1406 revenue, and then take some of the replaced funds and apply them to the administrative budget. So, that's one option. Another option would be looking at surplus revenues from 2019.
And we're not deciding that yet, today?
Correct, we're planning to bring this back as a budget amendment in Q1 2020, and you can make the decision then.
Okay, thank you. Because that's also when you'll be deciding the disposition of 1406?
Yes. We felt it made sense to probably look at those together.
Okay. All right, anybody want to make a motion?
Sure. I move to approve the ARCH 2020 work plan and budget.
Any discussion? We've had it. All right, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, it passes. All right, we are now moving on to Resolution Number 15... Oh, no, that's, sorry. Sorry, the script is going ordinance by ordinance. So, anyway, we're now moving on to the Agenda Bill 5623, Sustainability Update, K4C commitments. For that, we're welcoming Ross Freeman.
Thank you, council. Ross Freeman, you're City Sustainability Manager. I think I have 20 minutes on the docket, I'll see if I can keep it to that. I'm just going to go through a little bit of the background here to orient everybody, and make sure we're on a common footing. And the purpose, again, of this presentation is to, is to ultimately hope we can adopt the updated K4C climate commitments through resolution. So, just real quickly, why are we doing this work at regional level? One of the most compelling aspects, I think, is that, you know, government operations themselves generate very little of the emissions in the community. Graphically represented there, approximately through my PowerPoint skills, is the small blue dot from the government, and the rest is the other 98% of the emissions that happen in the region. So, we've done a lot of work at the city level, and other cities have too. King County has in their municipal, or their county-level operations. But there's, there's other work, most of it really, the majority is, is in the rest of the community, the residents. So, the best way to do that is through something that is organized centrally, where we can join into shared initiatives. And it's important to recognize that with the K4C, each partner really pursues only the measures and actions that make sense for them. One of the examples I like to bring up is that Issaquah, for example, there's a lot of big-box stores there. There's a lot of chances for building efficiency in those facilities. We don't have big boxes on Mercer Island, and so that would be a meaningless pursuit for us. So, that carries over to many different sectors, that there's things that just don't make sense for some communities and that do for others. And quite often, we hope that we can find a partner community to get some gains through efficiency and collaboration that way. Some of you have seen this map before, but it actually is growing now. We've added a couple new city members. So, now, as it stands, this represents 1.6 million people, and that's 80% of King County's population. So, one of the powerful aspects of K4C, and this is something that Councilmember Bassett has, has been, is very well aware of, is that there's a pretty strong advocacy power there when you're representing that many people. And it helps amplify Mercer Island's fairly limited voice in terms of, say, state-level climate legislation, when we can join forces with other electeds and represent a much larger entity, the K4C. And that really has carried over to a number of different things that I'll go through in a slide coming here. So, what can be done when you are part of the K4C? These are the kinds of measures that are fairly common, and we've tackled in the last couple of years. Some of this work happens at the staff level, that would be people like me. And other cities have somebody like me, usually it's a part of a planner, or somebody in public works. And then it's also actions from electeds, and sometimes those electeds are very engaged and spend extra time working on advocacy in Olympia, as Bruce has done. Recently, then, there was, as many of you know, a lot of achievements in the state legislature last session on clean electricity and a number of other measures. One of the initiatives we're really excited about, that really came purely because of our membership in the K4C, was a new opportunity... membership in the K4C was a new opportunity to purchase clean wind power from a brand-new wind farm that PSC is building in central western Washington, should be operational early 2020. And that really was offered up to cities and other large institutional purchasers first. We jumped at the opportunity and that will be serving 100% of our city operation needs once it comes online. And then finally, there's other policy arenas that we get involved in through the K4C. For example, building codes in the most recent cycle. And again, coming down to Olympia and representing 1.6 million residents, it's a powerful thing that hasn't occurred in some of these policy arenas before. So the questions come up, well, you know, is this working? And I'd like to point out just a few slides here to kind of help clarify that, that it's difficult work. And yes, the total emissions at the county level are dropping slowly. That's the green line there. But when you take it in context of how quickly population has jumped in that same period, you know, per capita, we're doing really well. And one of the important take homes here is that county staff feel like we're seeing that decoupling from economic and population booms separating from carbon emissions, that, you know, areas can grow, but we can make it as low carbon as possible. So that's the trajectory we hope to continue on. So looking at the city level, well, is this working at the city? Are some of these shared measures that we're participating in, how is that playing out at the local level? You'll notice that the data here only go up to 2016. I'm still working on entering 2017 and 2018. I've been too busy with communications work to get this done. But the target line there, 170,000 tons a year, we are beginning to approach that. That represents a 25% reduction over the baseline levels from 2007. And you can see that we are working our way slowly there.
May I ask?
Yes, question.
Just I don't want to lose track of this particular piece of data. Where does this data come from?
So this is aggregated up from about 50 different sources. There is the obvious things like our utility bills. There's data we get from our ways taller. There's the data we get from our purchases of gasoline for the fleet. There is a whole range of different things that are entered into my tracking system by me. And then there's accepted scientific translations of those different metrics into measures of carbon emissions. So they're all, you can get to an apples-to-apples sort of summary roll-up.
Does every jurisdiction do this the same way?
No, not every jurisdiction does that. Some use, or some are just doing Excel spreadsheets and manual calculations. Some are using other sophisticated tracking software. At this time, we're doing this the same way that Bellevue, Kirkland, Redmond, and King County are doing it, using the software that we use.
Okay, thank you.
So why are we here today talking about this update? You know, what triggered this? As you saw in the Agenda Bill, the first joint commitments were adopted by a smaller subset of the member cities. The K4C wasn't as big back then, five years ago. What's happened? Well, we've had a lot of advances in Olympia on climate legislation. We have also had simultaneously, I'd say fairly unexpected weakening of some of the federal emissions programs that we were counting on for, to take care of some of our emissions reductions. So we're having to find new ways to tackle that. There's also new technical developments. Things are growing faster than we may have expected in some arenas like the expansion of EVs. And just yesterday, Ford comes out with the E Mustang. So that's a pretty notable development in that arena. And finally, this also builds on other city or council greenhouse gas work that's already adopted or underway. And I spelled those out in the Agenda Bill, but the most notable item being in 2007 when council went on record with Resolution 1389, basically stating the 80% reduction by 2050 goal that's aligns with King County and other city goals around the region. So just to summarize this piece, the joint commitments serve as a blueprint for shared actions and offering a menu, but it's not a mandate. And really by signing on again, what the city is doing is pledging to continue to work diligently on these issues, collaborating where we can, partnering with other cities who are doing similar work. I don't want to go through every bullet here, but this summarizes in a little bit more detail, you know, what some of the changes are. Essentially, it's clarifying some of the language, adding some equity language, adding in new pathways towards reaching some of these targets. And then adding a few new sections and maybe I'd highlight in particular the need for climate change preparedness, that it's now widely accepted that some of the changes in climate are unavoidable at this point. And it's now a good idea for cities and partnerships like the K4C to talk about how are you going to mitigate the unavoidable consequences of warming and of more disruptive So finally, sort of wrapping up, the snippet on the left there is that letter of commitments, the new joint letter. And on the right is the resolution that's part of the packet. And with that, I'm happy to take some questions.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions?
Yeah.
Saleem?
Ross, the chart that you showed that had the data that you've aggregated from all the different sources and it went to 2016? What can, what's being done to fill that gap? And wasn't there some community kind of volunteerism around doing the data entry and trying to get that all standardized into format that would go under the software?
Yes. So initially, it always takes about a year to, many communities are one or two years behind because you can't gather some data until a calendar year has completed. Some data comes in monthly, but some is only once a year. So you'll find many communities around the region have a year or two that's still to be entered. And initially, I thought I would be able to catch up on that, but the communications needs on my position the last three years have been insurmountable. So it's been impossible for me to do that. And then recently, we were approached by Island Vision and Dr. Harrington here is part of that. That's coming up on a year ago now. We are finally to the phase where we have formalized, or close to formalizing and finalizing a sort of letter of agreement between us, where the data entry could be assisted by members of Island Vision. In the interim, Island Vision had access to the data that we do have in our Scope 5 tracking system and produced a draft report by a consultant that helped move the ball down the field in terms of areas to focus on. And that's the kind of product I would imagine that would be an example of other things that could come out of a partnership like that. So I'm hoping that in the next month or so, we should be able to see if there's other ways that that catch-up work can continue.
So can you give us an idea of when we'll actually have the data entered? I mean, something more concrete than we'll look, just when can we get it backfilled? When can we have?
Well, I could not give you something exact. The nature of my job being split between a slow burn and urgent crisis makes it very difficult. Anytime a communications emergency comes up, that is job number one. However, I look forward to partnering with Dr. Harrington and others in, I'd say after January the 1st, I would hope that we could figure out a way to tackle this.
Lisa?
Right now.
Okay. Benson?
I think I do have a couple of questions. I'm just trying to formulate the order in which I want to ask them and not sneeze into my content.
Ross, just a quick follow-up. I mean, you talked about the gathering the data or always inputting the data. And I assume that's, the idea is to make that part of a climate action plan or the basis? And again, I know that you're spending a lot of time on your communication aspect. So trying to identify a possible time where you might think a climate action plan might be something before the council, just to look at? Do you have any idea?
Well, I've tried to estimate that a number of times. So I'm hesitant to lock down a date. I would say that if the partnership with Island Vision helps on the data catch-up side, which I have every reason to believe it can. And we already have now a few people that understand the backend of our tracking software. So that helps spread the load. Assuming that part, then I think, once we have that entered and if that's in the next few months, that gives us a huge foundation to work on the skeleton of a plan. I mean, I have a skeleton now. It's really fleshing out the measures where we would like to focus most of our energy. And as you've heard me explain in a few presentations before over the years, we already know the two areas that are the vast majority of our emissions, you know, there's energy use in buildings and people driving alone in vehicles. So that hasn't changed. It's not going to change in the next few months. And that's because we've known that for a few years. That's what we focused on with the time available in terms of first mile, last mile solutions and other ways to more cleanly generate energy, like the rooftop solar program.
Mayor, if I could chime in here too. Given the late hour, I understand there's a desire to have a date certain when we can carve out some capacity for Ross to do the catch-up work. Would you allow Ross and I to talk offline and then we'll be looking at scheduling something for 2020?
I think I'm going to carry on with that particular point and that is, you know, across the last, well, almost the last year, we've had this conversation about how do community partnerships start to help with some of the services the city has historically provided and at least for the foreseeable future cannot on the basis of Prop 1 and some revenue issues. So first, a big thank you to the group for offering to step in and work and understand some of the constraints. I think that's terrific. But I would also ask that in the months yet to come, that there's some degree of ambition and see what more can be done. So rather than it stopping or subsisting at a level of data entry or data management, that maybe there is, again, a more proactive role that could be taken. So with that having been said, Lisa, are you?
Yeah. So a couple of questions. This is all new to me. So I'm, I don't want to say reluctant to sign on to this because I think sustainability and trip reduction and waste reduction are very important. What I am worried about is the extent to which this obligates the city in any sort of financial way that is not budgeted or planned for and whether it, you know, seeking some clarity around this is not one size fits all, not all these goals may be ours. And my concern about signing on to them is, you know, some of these goals are inconsistent with the city's goals. So I don't want to say no, but I don't want to lock myself or the city into something by agreeing to this. And so, I mean, Ross, the assurances that you can give me about whether approval of this resolution obligates the city in any tangible financial way or any particular path towards some of these goals, that would be very helpful.
Yeah, I'd be happy to answer that. No, there's no obligation to spend money in any particular way because of this. I will note, as I've mentioned to all of you, we do participate through an ILA. So there's a nominal fee each year of about $1,200 to be part of the K4C. Beyond that, we're not required to spend money in any particular fashion or spend money at all if we think we could do something without spending money. So that would be part one. And part two, it's not a binding legal mandate from King County. It's an agreement to continue a lot of the work that many of the communities are already doing, but to try to work collaboratively, be aspirational, and seek ways to partner to get the most gain from limited resources. And with that in mind, during the last work session on this, that a number of electeds attended, including some of our council members here, a number of participants there mentioned that they wanted to see the understanding elevated up in the principles list that it's not one size fits all and that different actions will make sense for some communities and make no sense for others. And so that was something that was moved up to, excuse me, item number four in the principles for collaboration page. That's the second page into the document.
Okay, thank you. Bruce?
I would move to approve Resolution Number 1570 to adopt the refreshed 2019 Joint Climate Commitments presented by the K4C.
Any discussion?
I'll have just a moment if I could to speak to it. So several things. So K4C is a tremendous leveraging of our abilities and I think it's an organization that gives a great service to not only us, but to the whole region. And I want to also, as others have, call out our community folks who have volunteered to step up and not just around doing data entry, but also around developing the climate action plan. Jonathan's been working on that. And these are folks who have a tremendous capability, I think, to be assets to us if we can just get them tied in in the right way with Ross. So the opportunity is there, I think, to have great leveraging both through K4C and through our local citizens. But at the end of the day, Ross has to have the time carved out to work on this stuff. And it's sort of full circle back to, you know, the outcome of the task force we had some years ago, which had a whole bunch of things we'd like to do, but the top thing was you've got to put some money into hiring somebody and give that person the time to work on this because otherwise everything else is words only. It's just not going to happen. So to the extent that there is an appetite for more, and Lisa, I hear your concern about spending money, but the reality is that if Ross is a resource who is constantly being pulled off onto communications work, as he is, it simply doesn't give him the time to advance this. And so, you know, we took a run at making this a part of the recology contract. That didn't play out. But the council in the coming year is going to do budget again and I would hope that there's some recognition of the fact that you've got to have a staff person who's got some time to work on this stuff if you want to have success at moving it forward. So with that, I'm pleased that we're considering this refresh of the K4C commitments and hope the council will support it.
Benson?
I certainly agree with everything that Bruce just said. I also just want to thank Ross for all of his time and effort in working with the K4C staff. I think he's been quite instrumental and so I appreciate his leadership in this area.
Thank you.
All right. Not seen anybody else reaching for the mic. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. All right, super. We are now moving on to AB 5632, Public Institution Code Amendment First Reading. So welcoming Evan Maxim.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. I have a brief presentation, which I'll make even briefer, given the hour and the simplicity of this amendment. Just a quick touch on background, the proposed amendment and the planning commission's recommendation. City Council will recall, last November, the council adopted Conference of Plan Amendments and a zoning map amendment related to the Tully's parcel 12 development, amending the zoning of those properties from public institution to town center. That amendment and Conference of Plan Amendment were appealed. This appeal was known as the Cone 3 Growth Management Hearings Board Appeal. In the Growth Management Hearings Board decision, they concluded that we had text in our code that described the extent of the public institution zone. That text is contained in MICC 1905010 subsection B. It's Attachment A to Exhibit 1 in your packet tonight. It's attachment A to Exhibit 1 in your packet tonight. The Growth Management Hearings Board directed the city to eliminate that inconsistency between our Conference of Plan zoning map and the text of our code and established a deadline for reconciling that material of January 7, 2020. As a reminder to the City Council, the area generally reflected on the screen above me and across the room, that's clouded in red. The orange area is the area that we're discussing this evening. The gray shading that you see across I-90 and portions of the Lidd Park is the public institution zoning designation. The orange area that you see also, of course, includes parcel 12 would be the town center zoning designation. So the proposed code amendment itself is quite simple. It simply eliminates subsection B. It is unusual for a code to contain a text description of the extent of a zoning designation. That is the purpose of your zoning map. There's the repeal of subsection B and then renumbering, pardon me, renumbering of the remaining subsections. Planning Commission reviewed this in October following their October 30 public hearing, have recommended that the City Council approve the proposed language in Exhibit 1, Attachment A. That was a specific recommendation from the Planning Commission. Planning Commission also heard public comment, public testimony, which prompted an accompanying separate recommendation to the City Council, which is contained in its entirety in your packet for this evening. And with that, unless there are questions, I would recommend that you take a motion.
All right.
I moved Set Ordinance 19C-19 for second reading and adoption on December 3, 2019, Consent Calendar.
Any discussion?
Yeah. I, um, I think we should consider modifying the rezone to exclude the portion of Linear Park. And I think this comes as no surprise to anyone that I have never been in favor of developing Linear Park, and I think that would solve the problem as well. So I, on reflection, am not in favor of this. I think there are other ways to do it. I think that there are.
I'm going to ask if Evan can comment. I'm not sure that that's really the substance of what it is we're looking at right now.
The intent behind this ordinance is to resolve the inconsistency that the Growth Management Hearings Board ordered us to correct.
Understood. But.
The proposed change, if I understood it correctly, Councilmember Andrell, would not resolve that inconsistency. It would require a further amendment of our Conference of Plan land use map and our zoning map.
Well, then maybe I need to study the issue further and don't completely understand it, but yeah.
So Evan, if you can go to your map, I think what I'm hearing you say is that the area in orange is Zone TC5?
That's correct, Deputy Mayor.
And that zoning designation, which already exists, does not coexist with the, this public institution zone?
It does not. It's not consistent with the text of the code.
Right.
And so what we have to do today is solve that incongruent situation by, well, this effectively does that, or we would have to rezone the TC5 to something else that does coexist with this.
That's correct, Deputy Mayor.
So right now, this is, it underplays it. I'm trying to come up with a better word than housekeeping.
Well, let's just remember it's zoning. It's not construction.
Yeah.
Action we need to take to be in compliance.
It's a code inconsistency. We do have a second. Just want to give Lisa a chance if she has any further comment.
Yeah, I, um, I understand what you're doing from a technical standpoint. I just.
Could, if I could, I would just ask, Evan, could, and maybe, and I didn't fully grasp the conversation you, Deputy Mayor, were having with him, but she's expressing an interest in having a conversation. I'm suggesting tonight with this specific amendment before us is probably not the right time to have that. We're just cleaning this up. But it's sort of helping her find a path forward, what would be the right time or venue for the conversation she's proposing to take place?
So if the City Council were to exclude, for example, a portion of property to the northwest of Sunset Highway, to the north of Sunset Highway, which is occupied, I believe, right now by the Sculpture Gallery, if that's the intent behind Councilmember Andrell's comments, that would be most appropriately docketed on your 2020 Conference of Plan Amendment docket to amend the future land use designation map in our land use element of the Conference of Plan. And concurrently, we would work on a zoning map amendment with that Conference of Plan Amendment review.
If I may also offer a project-level comment, if there's a desire at some point to talk about the actual footprint of the project, that conversation would be most appropriate as we head towards a binding agreement discussion with our developer Main Street at this point in the absence of any designs. We don't have the information right now to talk about how the project could be modified to accomplish what you've identified, Councilmember Andrell.
Right. I guess where I'm going is simply that I believe that that Sculpture Park area should not be zoned to Town Center. Right? I mean, that's where I'm coming from. I want it to continue to be park. I don't want to see it developed. I think that is a bad use of public land, and I think it is very damaging to the people who use that park area for walking and because they live nearby. I don't know how to get there. I don't know, but, and I understand, because I'm a lawyer, technically, we do have to do something to come into compliance and that this does that. I just feel like it closes the door on being able to readdress this because we don't even know if we're going to do a comprehensive plan in 2020, and, you know, then where does that leave us? And those things are long and complicated.
No, sir, Evan, please respond.
Pardon me for interrupting, Council. The, I'll remind Councilmember Andrell, the use of that land as park is not dependent on the zoning designation underlying it. We have parkland identified throughout the city that's zoned, public institutional, residential, 9.6, R15, all sorts of zoning designation. So I recognize the comment you're making. Perhaps I'm not solving the problem, but I do think it's truly a project-level decision that the council has direct control over with its negotiations with our development partner.
Well, and I mean, I think to maybe cut to the chase, since it's 955, if there are four votes for it, I may just abstain, and this will give me two weeks to think about it before it comes back.
Okay. All right. So Saleem, did you want to go ahead and say anything or?
Well, I was just going to add, it's a good recommendation to docket it for 2020 because there are other pockets like this in Town Center. If you remember, the Freshies Triangle was Linear Park, was rezoned TC5, but then fell out of the development scenario. So you do have another sliver within Town Center that has exactly the same issue that you care about, but would be better discussed within Conference of Plan docket more comprehensively than just this issue. So I would support that, and we could have that discussion next year.
All right. All right. All in favor of the motion as read, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
Abstain.
Great. So it passes four with one abstention.
Four to zero to one.
Yep. Okay. So final item, Regular Businesses Agenda Bill 5628, Code of Ethics Revisions. And for that, we have Chief of Administration, Ally Speitz.
Good evening, Council. I'm, what, good evening, Council? I always get put at the end, and then I get silly because I'm tired. It's been a long day. Okay, I'm here tonight to talk to you about the revisions to the Code of Ethics. And the Code of Ethics for Public Officials was originally adopted in November 2018, so last year. The code requires that officials comply with laws, they be independent and impartial and fair in their judgment and actions, that they use their office for public good and not personal gain, and that all public deliberations and processes are conducted openly and in an atmosphere of respect and stability. The revisions, we removed references to state laws as the city is not necessarily the authority to investigate complaints related to some of those laws. What we did add were four sections regarding the acceptance of GIs, interest in contracts, incompatible service, confidential information, and then personal and private interests. These four align with the Code of Ethics for Municipal Officers in State Law. They just elaborate a little bit more about what they mean. We also updated the Code of Ethics statement to reflect these specific changes. So there's a new resolution for you to review, to pass that would adopt the updated statement. The revisions also provide a process for responding to complaints for the Code of Ethics. It creates the position of an ethics officer who's responsible for the prompt and fair enforcement of the Code of Ethics. I have been in contact with the Seattle Ethics and Elections Commission, and they are willing to be our ethics officer. The City of Kirkland also does this same contracting with them, so it'd be under a similar agreement. So after a complaint is received, the ethics officer makes a determination of sufficiency within 30 days. If the complaint is insufficient, inadvertent, or has already been addressed, it will be dismissed. If the complaint is sufficient, the ethics officer will conduct an investigation. If the ethics officer determines that there is a material violation of those four code sections, then a hearing will be held to determine if a violation has occurred. So there'll be 30 days' notice for a hearing, and then the public official who has been complained against can file a written answer to the charge, and of course, appear at the hearing with or without legal counsel, submit their testimony, be fully heard, and examine and cross-examine witnesses. So because we need to hold a hearing, we need to have a hearing examiner. So they will conduct these hearings on the complaints that are found to be sufficient by the ethics officer. The hearing examiner will prepare the official record of the hearing, including all testimony, which will also be recorded. And then within 30 days of the hearing, the hearing examiner will issue a final decision with findings of fact, conclusions of law, and a recommended disposition. The next step will be for the City Council to take action. The council can deliberate the stipulations and recommendations from the ethics officer and the findings, conclusions, and recommendations from the hearing examiner in executive session. The public official that's been complained against cannot participate or attend the executive session, and the City Council's final action shall be by a majority vote in the public meeting. The council has a number of possible actions for the disposition, anywhere from a dismissal of the violation to a reprimand to a civil penalty of up to $1,000. So I'm here tonight to present all of this to you, answer your questions, and collect any feedback that you have. And our goal is to bring it back to you on the Consent Calendar, December 3 Council Meeting. And at that point, staff would then contract with the Seattle Ethics Elections Commissions for the ethics officer, and then we would work with a local lawyer to be the hearing examiner. Our current hearing examiner does not do Code of Ethics violations, so we'll find someone else.
Okay, thank you. Council, questions? Okay, Saleem, Benson, Bruce?
So the question is on Exhibit 1, Page 12, Paragraph 6, and it's under removal. And here it says, this is under repercussions. So let's say there's an investigation and all the hearings happen, and I suppose that the charge is upheld. We can remove a member of a board or commission or other appointed task group or committee in the event the public official against whom the complaint is made is currently a member of the City Board or Commission or other task group or committee appointed by the City Council. The City Council may, in addition to other possible penalties set forth in this section and notwithstanding any other provision, by a majority of vote, remove the public official from such board. So does that apply to mayor and deputy mayor?
No, the City Council cannot remove another council member.
No, they, but they, could they remove the mayor, deputy mayor title? Because that is voted upon by the council. And so this paragraph seems to say that as long as it's something appointed by the council, the council can strip it.
I think if that was the intent of the council, we would make that very clear in the language. We would add that in if that's what the council is wanting.
Maybe a opinion from the city attorney as well. I just want to, you know, I just have to say, I went through this, and this was a very painful process to go through, and I don't want any ambiguity anywhere in this thing.
Right. As far as subsection C, 6 is concerned, it's removal of a member of the board, commission or appointed task group. It does not include City Council. So that it does not pertain to removing a title that's, you know, that's voted upon by the council to elect a mayor or a deputy mayor. That would have to be in a separate provision.
We could add one that would say removal hyphen mayor or deputy mayor position, and we could write the language for that.
How does it happen otherwise? Is there something in the rules of procedure?
For.
Is there anything in the existing rules of procedure to strip?
Nope.
A title?
No.
So once, once council votes for mayor and deputy mayor, that's locked for two years?
Unless a person resigns.
Yeah.
Or dies, or, I mean, there's various reasons, but I, I, you know, there's, that's not the only one. I wanted to make it clear that I.
So have you seen that language in other ethics codes that they remove of, of the title?
Oh, no, no. I didn't. I haven't. But honestly, the other ethics codes that are out there are a lot longer than ours. They're extremely prescriptive. And my goal in putting this together was to make it as succinct as possible. But if the council would like it to be more detailed, we can, staff can take that back and do that.
So Council, is there any interest in having staff look at any other provisions around removal of the title of mayor or deputy mayor?
I'd be in favor of that.
I'd support it.
Yeah, I think if you're going to, it should kind of apply to all of those situations that are appointed by council.
May I? I want to ask a quick clarifying question. We're discussing it here in relation to the Code of Ethics, so you're directing us to say if there's a Code of Ethics violation, that title could be removed. Are you also asking us to go back to your council rules of procedure and make sure that if the mood changes for the appointment of the mayor or deputy mayor, that you would also have a mechanism outside of an ethics consideration to make that change? Just here?
No, I wouldn't.
Okay. Just in the context of ethics.
Thank you.
But we do need to make sure that if there were a removal, there's a process in our council rules of procedure to make, I guess, a short-term appointment to finish that.
Yeah, I mean, if at any point the office of mayor or deputy mayor becomes vacant for whatever reason, at the next meeting, we would then hold elections again, and that would be till the end of that term. It wouldn't be for another two-year term. It would just be till the end of that two years.
Okay. All right.
I meant to say, I apologize. You do have revised versions of the ordinance on your table. Oh, yeah, they've got yellow highlights. Councilmember Wong and Mayor Bertland and Councilmember Bassett had emailed in with some changes. So none of them were substantive. They were mostly just answer to questions or extra words that were there with the with the. I wanted to make sure you guys knew it was with the.
I like the full-color version here. Very nice.
Yeah.
All right. So next up is Benson, then Bruce, then Lisa.
I'm sorry. Yeah, I had the questions regarding the, excuse me, regarding the advisory opinions. And this is on 2.60, .090. Excuse me, Paragraph 8 or Section 8. The only question I had was this upon request. The only question I had was this, upon request of a public official, then the ethics officer may render or shall render an advisory opinion. So I wasn't quite sure, you know, because I mean...
Yeah, so your questions were...
Make a phone call and say, hey, give me an advisory.
What's the check for a public official to make this request? Because we will have to pay for it.
Right.
It's $105 an hour for the Ethics Commission to either investigate or review our Code of Ethics or do advisory opinions. So I think that we could add language of who that advisory opinion would be asked of. Councilmember Wong suggested the city manager. We could add language to the code to clarify that. So if any of you wanted an advisory opinion, you would need to come and ask somebody so that we could make sure that it was... But then again, that's putting it back on staff to make a decision, so I'm not sure how we want to do that.
Well, can a, could a council member go directly to...
Yes. The issue comes along with that we are paying for that. So if you wanted to go to the ethics officer to ask a question and get an advisory opinion, we would get a bill in the mail. And so I guess the question is among the council. If you're all okay with that, then that's the way we can leave the code.
Can you put it, I mean, I have no idea if an opinion is something that would take them 20 minutes or five hours. I mean, I can imagine it might depend. But could you arguably put a time limit on it if it takes less than, I mean, we've tried these de facto things before in terms of like reaching out to staff and asking them for stuff.
Do you see me over here squinching my eyebrows? So this request came forward, I want to make sure I understand it, to save the resources of having to hire somebody every time we just want an advisory. Keep it simple, is that, council member wrong?
No, I just, there was no check, there was no check. I mean, I could make a phone call to whoever the ethics officer is, ask for an advisory opinion, and the city gets paid. I mean, the city has to pay for it. So I was just asking whether or not there should be a check somewhere.
Do you mean process or check? I mean, is...
You mean...
Well...
Do you mean permission or...
It seems to me that there has to be at least...
Some gatekeeper?
Yeah, gatekeeper or something. I thought maybe that, that's a good phrase. I thought perhaps the city manager, but again, it's just a matter of trying to avoid somebody just arbitrary, not arbitrary, where I think everybody would act in a reasonable manner. But again, this is a cost to the city, and so I'm just sort of wondering. And I don't know, again, if there's any other city that has this, and is there a check or is there a gatekeeper?
I'm just going to make a general statement here. We're trying to offload this from staff in the most complete way possible. Even, I do have concerns, although I need to think about it, maybe, may not be able to provide a recommendation tonight. Putting the staff in any position, even as a gatekeeper, it creates some challenges, to be honest with you. I think I understand your point.
Well, I mean, I suppose if somebody is abusing us and just calling every week and asking for an advisory opinion, then that person is probably in violation of something. You know, I suppose it's just a matter of maybe qualifying the nature of the, the basis of the request. I mean, I guess, you know, I don't have the language, but it just seems to me that...
Like an advisory opinion based on reasonable...
Yeah, or something, or something, yeah. Anyway, I raised the question, and so...
Saleem?
The only thing I would say is if there were a way to funnel it through the city's attorney's office, it would prevent duplication of the same question. It would allow the city to interdict, is is often the case with a simpler solution to the problem. For example, the Sister City Association wants to send a delegate to the 20th anniversary in Towne-Laban for next year. Well, the city, if I were to ask for this opinion, would say, have them give the gift to the city, and the city can, the council can vote on accepting the gift. And there are ways to do this that don't put a burden on the staff, but we do need to recognize that the council has turnover, and everyone new doesn't know anything, and they're going to come in and read this thing, and they're going to say, well, I could probably use an advisory opinion. I'm not sure that the pressure on staff is going to be that much to interdict as opposed to just educate.
That's reasonable. Yeah, that works for me.
So when you say that, what do you interpret him as that?
Working through the city attorney's office as a point of contact. What I don't want to do is have staff in a position of saying, you can't get an advisory opinion. You see what I'm struggling with a little bit?
I think we can word it that if an advisory opinion is needed, go to the city attorney's office. The city attorney's office could then either ask, answer the question, or say, this is going to the ethics officer.
That works. I'm probably overthinking it a little bit. My apologies.
Well, on this point, I just, I would point out that this is written specifically towards a written advisory. I would imagine that the majority of cases would be just a verbal consult, and so in...
Yep, we can add it.
In fixing this, you need to think about verbal versus...
Well, we would, I believe that from the city attorney's office, it could be verbal, but if we go to the ethics officer, we would want it in writing. So...
They're different things, right? This written thing is intended to give you cover as a council member, right? I mean, you don't get the writ, in my estimation, you wouldn't ask for the written opinion unless you'd already asked for the verbal opinion or had a pretty good sense verbally of what you were into, and then said, okay, this is a little bit, you know, on the edge. I want some cover, and therefore, I'd like this written opinion that's going to give me that cover going forward. And so, again, I think there's a need for the language here to be thinking about those two different circumstances, you know? I just want to get a quick consult, on the one hand. I want some cover, some confirmation that I'm not going to get myself in trouble by doing this thing, on the other hand, and therefore, I want a written opinion about
And I think you correctly summarized the intent of having this written opinion be from the ethics officer. Whatever the city attorney's office advice is, is based on, you know, the office's interpretation of it, and it doesn't necessarily provide the shield here that this written opinion would provide. You know, for instance, if there's a circumstance where you're being offered a gift, and whether that gift is in any part related to your, you know, being a council member or not, if, you know, there's a lot of factors that could muddy the waters in that interpretation that, you know, you would, a council member would feel better having that written opinion received from the ethics officer. And if the ethics officer says yes, that you go ahead and accept that gift, then, you know, acting on, you know, in reliance of that opinion would shield a council member. So it's more of a protection for the council member. And as far as, you know, working through the city attorney's office, I mean, it wouldn't be something where I would say, no, you can't get an advisory opinion. It'd be just more of an administrative factor as to, okay, how do we craft this? Or have we had similar instances before? Would you be, would you feel comfortable acting, you know, based on other opinions? Things like that.
Well, are these confidential?
No, they're not. There would be, the written opinions would be directed to the public official making the request, but they would be subject to records request.
And verbal?
To the extent that they're verbal, they're not subject to the public records request. But as far as the written opinion here, it's, the opinion from the ethics officer is specifically written so that we have a record of it.
I'm losing, are we still on the same subject?
If I could, as long as we're still on that subject, I've got a whole bunch of questions that we'll come to when it's appropriate, but...
You're next on the list, anyway.
I know. Within this one, I am confused by this language on line three, which is solely related, is , are two words that I don't understand what that means here. So it's a bunch of stuff, two hypothetical circumstances and/or situations solely related to the persons, it probably should be person making the request since it was singular in the first place.
The way I read that is that you cannot ask on behalf of another council member. So if you know that the deputy mayor is about to receive a gift, you know, whether that's allowed or not, it would be the deputy mayor who would have to make the request for the written opinion, not, you know, another council member on behalf of the deputy mayor.
Okay. As long as those legal minds are clear on these things, and there'll be others, I'm going to be fine. But it just wasn't evident to me that that was, was that clear?
So was that your question? Because you were next on the list.
I've got a question, but I...
Yes.
So let me, let me just ask the sort of procedural question. I have maybe 15 different things that I highlighted in the ordinance, and I don't know, you know, whether to sort of nip at the first couple of them now and then take a turn again later, or how you'd like to proceed.
Well, I was just going to kind of give everybody a turn at this point, because I know some people have a fair number, and so this could be quite a lengthy discussion.
Does it, I would maybe suggest, does it make sense to begin at the beginning and say, if you've got a problem in the whereas, speak up, and then we move through it sequentially? Or you want to just do it person by person?
I'm good with that. Does the rest of council have any? Why don't we do that section by section, in case we have some...
I have exactly one question.
In case we have some similar questions. Wait, so Benson, what does that mean? I don't...
No, I just, it's going to be a very laborious process, and I'm just, I think, Bruce, I know you submitted some questions, I mean, comments, whatever. I've done that. Councilmember Anwar's done that. Does it make sense maybe for Ally to come back with a...
But I think she needs guidance on some of this stuff.
Okay, but maybe...
So, so council, we have options. I have a few of Bruce's comments. I got ones from him today and have responses to those. We have a couple of different things we do. We can go line by line, we can go through, and we can get everyone's. We could, everyone could send their comments to me, and I can try and put them in or answer them, answer the questions again. You know, it's up to you what you would like to do.
Well, I think one of the, what I understood was one of the objectives was hopefully to have this done by the end of the year. It doesn't have to be done by the end of the year. So depending what process we choose tonight will also obviously impact the timeline with which this gets done. So, I mean, to me, I think, if I could just finish, please. I think that there's some general points of clarification that I think should be discussed or we should have the opportunity, whether everything is at the same altitude, I think is another point. So council, I guess, I'm going to look to council for this one.
Well, we still have a couple more meetings after this one, so I know, yeah. So I suppose maybe at the next meeting, if Ally can, well, my druthers would be, send the questions, comments to Ally, let her come back with another version for the next meeting, for the second reading. We may not get there. It may have to be something that we adopt perhaps at the very last meeting in December.
Or in January.
Or January. I just can't, given the hour, plus we have an exec session scheduled, it's hard to believe that we are going to take anything less than an hour to go through line by line.
Certainly fine by me.
Okay, so the idea is for people to send their questions to Ally?
Yeah, send your questions, send your proposed changes, and send them off to me, and then what I can do is create a revised version. It'll kind of tag along with what is up on the dais for you tonight, so it'll show the changes. And if there are sections you are confused about that don't make sense, let me know. We'll try and get some clarifying language in there.
Okay. I am going to go ahead and, you know, take a turn and ask one question, and that is, official or public official means all members of the city council, the city's boards and commissions, other council-appointed task groups or committees, and the city manager of the city of Mercer Island. Does that mean, for example, all members of the CAG or the town center?
If they are council-appointed, so the CAG was not council-appointed.
So if it's city manager-appointed, it would not apply. If it was council-appointed, it would. Okay?
Yep, that's what the language says.
So it sounds like we're going to table this or come back to it, but...
I think we're going to send it.
Right. I want to make sure you get the direction that you need for stuff that's not in here. So one thing that we've heard that's not in here is this issue of members of these commissions and the council being admins or in a leadership role in certain social media-type circumstances. Do you have any language that, I mean, I didn't think that we would need this with a group of, you know, people that were leading in the community, having a conflict and not removing themselves voluntarily from those types of roles, but does anybody have that kind of language, and do we need that kind of language?
I, I'm questioning whether or not that belongs in a Code of Ethics that's included in our ordinance, or whether our social media presence is something that you prefer to take up under your council rules of procedure.
Yeah, revisit the social media element within the rules of procedure.
That's where I've seen it most often.
I think that, you know, if someone were to have a Facebook account that was council member Bob Jones, that's very different than just Bob Jones. And I think we also have pretty strict rules about public records when it comes to posting on social media. So we try and find that line between posting as an official and posting as a resident. And I think there's also that fine line in being an admin on any social media. Are you admin because you're a resident, or are you admin because you're a council member? So I think probably as interim city manager Bond spoke about, it's probably best to come at it from our social media policies versus putting it in the Code of Ethics.
I'm fine with that, it's, you're over IT, so I'm guessing that's going to come back to you, too.
IT?
Did IT normally deal with the social media policies, or...
Oh, no, that's you guys. It's your social media policies. That's the city clerk.
Put that in the work plan.
Okay, so what I'm understanding then is every council member has a responsibility to go ahead and ensure that they get their comments or questions to Ally. I'm still working on it, Bruce. Then it comes back to us in a drafted version for December 3rd, and we'll have a conversation discussion then, and then we'll see where we are with the, I guess, the intent that it would go through on December 10th.
Yeah.
Okay, Bruce?
Yeah, I was going to say, I, not everybody got to answer, ask their questions, so...
Okay, well, let's go with Bruce, and then we'll go with you.
So one kind of high-level observation and question that goes with it. Some of the language that's here, I think, is probably fairly digestible to an attorney, but not so much to someone without a legal, without legal training. And I'm, I've read it now two or three times and have sort of, and asked a number of questions to, and I've raised one here this evening, too, to just say, what the heck does that mean? I do want to ask the overarching question of, is that the right kind of document for this? Because at the end of the day, this is really intended to be read and digested by laymen who are expected to abide by it. And yet, it's written in a way that I would argue, plenty of folks aren't going to really be able to figure out what the heck those details mean. So what I, what I sent to Ally was a number of different things where I said, I can't, I can't really make heads or tails of what this means, it's just a bit too complicated for me. And so the question I asked the council is, you want to just tweak, or do we want to sort of say back up and write this thing for the layman? Because that would be a much bigger task.
Mayor, may I address that? We agree as staff, and we have... And we've been talking internally, Ally, Bo, myself. We've taken a lot of this language from, you know, companion ordinances in other cities. We talked today about our concerns, exactly what you just said. This is, this is very heavy language. And it's, we're struggling with it a little bit as well. If the desire is to rewrite this in plain language, I would need to carve out some time for the city attorney to work on this. And it would definitely push us into 2020. If the council is comfortable with that, that would be my recommendation. Although I'm sensitive to the need for getting procedural amendments incorporated into the code. So we agree. This is language that we have largely borrowed, and we think it could be improved. But we will need additional time.
So you don't think there's a light touch that could just make it all more consumable?
I think it's really your pleasure. Councilmember Bassett asked a series of questions. We got responses done, but it was late in the day today, and they were good questions. But again, they required an attorney to interpret. So I think the point is well-taken. If these are intended to be a document that is easily readable and understandable, then what I would recommend is we take probably two months and push out into 2020 and allow our attorney to redraft. If you're okay with, with the way they stand in making some refinements, then we could probably get this done by the end of the year. I know that's probably not helping your discussion.
I'm going to look to the next, those who are on the next council to drive this.
No, I, I think in general, when they have the code, I mean, it needs to be something that's readable by the, by the public. So I take councilmember Bassett's comments seriously. And I think, you know, it reads like, you know, a statute or, you know, so I can understand that. It is what it is. And, you know, some people might like it, and I like the detail. And so I, I'm not necessarily bothered by it. But on the other hand, I, I think for consumers, it may be something, and if you're recommending, Jesse, that it be simpler, then maybe that's the way to go.
If the desire is to allow us some time to completely revise, and let's call it, write it in more plain, plain language, I just consulted with Bo, and we could have it back to you by the second meeting in January, the next draft.
All right. I, well, I personally feel like it is written like a statute, because it is law. It is an ordinance. And a lot of times, these a little bit more dense, difficult-to-read things do have less ambiguity in them because of the complexity. They've covered all of the bases. I personally don't see a need to have it rewritten, but I'm a lawyer. And so, you know, take that for what it's worth. I think it would be nice to get a more detailed code in place. I didn't see anything particularly wrong with this, except that there was ambiguity, in my view, as to whether 060 covered the issue of being, you know, controlling speech on some, on social media. And I do feel strongly that council people should not be leads on Nextdoor, just to put the skunk right on the table. It's one thing to speak on your own behalf. It's another to be making decisions about what type of speech is permitted by others. And I just think it is too fine a line to ask council members to walk. And it's also unfair, it's unfair to council members, and it's unfair to the community, because there's always going to be a perception of impropriety, whether it's true or not. I would say just avoid it completely. And I would have an absolute hard blanket ban on that.
All right. So Saleem, you have a preference?
Yeah, let me, let me just, just, Saleem, break.
Yeah. Well, I mean, I don't have a, I mean, I, I don't have a position, so I don't know if we have a tie or not.
I would, I would be in favor of moving ahead with, with this version. Let's receive everybody's edits. Let's get back together, look at it, and see if we can forge ahead. I didn't particularly have a problem with the language. I found it was, you know, if it's not readable, it's, there's an opinion that can be sought by council. There's an opinion that can be sought by commissions. It's not going to be perfect the first time out of the gate. But I don't want what happened to staff and myself to happen again.
Well, and some of us, too.
Yeah.
I think the other thing that we do have is the code of ethics statement, which is supposed to be more of the layman's language about it. And so I will spend some time looking at that to see if there is maybe more that we can put in there that really kind of relays the intent of those code sections.
Okay. So what I'm hearing is that it is going to come back this year. So council, we're just going to, I think, we're in good conversation. We're back to where we were, which is send your comments, your suggestions to Ally. I think there's going to be a general effort, maybe to clarify and/or soften some of the legalese, but not lose the, I think, as Lisa said, the person, sort of the, she didn't use the word prescriptiveness, but I kind of got what you meant, the detail.
I would have been okay with that word.
Oh, okay. I had one words in your mouth, especially now a lawyer. So I think that's, that's where we land with that one. Okay. Good. So we now move to other business and the planning schedule. For that, we go to interim city manager.
Microphone, thank you, mayor. We do have two meetings remaining this year, December 3. I will point out, at this point, we do not have a study session scheduled for the front side of that meeting. I may need to evaluate whether we need to have an executive session. So meeting time, start time to follow. We have a full agenda. I won't go through all of those items. And a reminder that we've added a council meeting on December 10. That is the evening that we will be also recognizing our outgoing council members. So I hope everyone can plan to attend. We only have a couple items on the agenda at this moment, but there may be something that cascades over, depending on what we're able to complete on the third.
Code of ethics.
Yes, yes. After that, we will wish everyone farewell and a happy holidays, and resume again January 7 for the swearing-in of our new council members. And that is a meeting where the appointment of the mayor and deputy mayor takes place. One final reminder, I have to keep plugging this. January 24th and 25th is our planning session in, in 2020. And I will leave it at that.
Okay. Great. So we have, well, any upcoming council member absences? And I think I would just say for the month of December. Do we, is everybody able to attend both the 3rd and the 10th?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Cool. So then, I think we also have some council member absences to excuse?
Excuse? Second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay. They are excused. Council member reports, let's start with Bruce. Saleem? Benson?
Yeah, I have a few things. So I'll be quick. Just a reminder, YFS Foundation's having their breakfast coming up on February 12. I attended a kickoff of table captains. I told them I would challenge all the city council members here and also the ones that are coming on next year to be a table captain. So there's the challenge, okay? Second of all, you probably have seen signs on the island. All the campaign signs are gone. But there's other signs that are going up regarding, I love Mercer Island. I think that's from the Mercer Island Community Fund. So I encourage people to make that part of your charitable giving, if you're so inclined. It's sort of like the island version of United Way. Lastly, I send out to each of you folks the SCA 2020 legislative agenda. I was hoping to get thumbs up, thumbs down as far as general support for the SCA legislative agenda by people's looks. I'm not sure if everybody has had a chance to look at it, so.
Sorry, I haven't.
All right. Well, I send it out on the 14th. And so, anyway.
So look at it, and we'll go through it December 3. And, or is that, if people give?
That's, that's fine. That would be okay.
Okay.
Yeah, that'll be before the next.
Next pick meeting.
Pick meeting. Yeah. That'll be fine.
So, so please take a look, and we'll do a thumbs up on it.
Yeah, or can we just email you without replying to all?
Oh, yeah. Like, just.
Well, we still need to get a.
Oh, yeah.
Team approval.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Councilmember Weicher already gave her a thumbs up, so.
Okay. Well, we'll do it in public session.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, that's it?
That's it.
All right. Lisa?
Just on that, is there any way to just put it in the council packet so that it's there?
Yes. And I think we're going to start doing that without a complicated, it may just be a short cover memo, so we don't have to prepare a full agenda bill. But that way, it ends up in your packet.
Well, we used to have, at least very briefly, there was a section that was on the planning schedule that said something about regional, something, something, something.
Yes.
And I noticed that fell off a couple months ago. Lisa, anything from you?
Yeah, well, two things. We had a utility board meeting a week ago today on the 12th. We got a very good update from Recology. It does seem like the bumps in the road have smoothed out. All of the containers have been picked up. People are still grousing a little bit about their bills, but it looks like everything is working there. It was, was a good, good presentation. We also had a presentation from King County on the sewer line install. And without getting into too much detail, I'd be happy to, if people want me to. But the King County plan contemplates some relatively significant disruption of our traffic on the north end during the installation of some of the line. And the utility board voted unanimously to express concern about the plan to close North Mercer Way for four months between Island Crest Way.
Is it fully closed, or is it one lane?
Fully closed.
Okay.
Between Island Crest Way and 81st. So King County is going to go back and do some more work and get some answers on that and report back. There were questions about why an alternate route wasn't considered. The answer was just, you know, kind of a summary. We looked at it, and it doesn't work. But that wasn't really enough of detail for the utility board members. So there's that. And, you know, in fairness to the King County, I mean, when they first proposed this in 2016, I, there were a lot of mobility issues that are on the table now that weren't on the table then. So I think that it's definitely a bigger issue with bus intercept and everything else. That, so that's the utility board. And then just another plug for the Christmas tree lot. And if you, I'll take Benson's challenge on the table captain, and I will challenge people to volunteer on the Christmas tree lot, because it's a hoot. You get to meet a lot of the community. And whether you're, you know, helping people pick out trees or actually tying them to the tops of the cars, it's, it's a great way to be involved.
I'm an elf, I'm a February 30.
Ah, Bruce?
Hey.
You have a second chance.
I don't want to cut you off.
No, no, that was my, I was done.
So thank you, Benson, mentioning the community fund. However, somebody, if anybody's in touch with those folks, at least our experience was that their URL on the sign didn't work. So it really would be good if they'd get that functioning. And if you're looking for them, otherwise, it's mycommunityfund.org. So that you can, they do have a web, excuse me, they do have a website. But I think the one on the signs isn't functioning.
Okay. Just a quick couple words. We had our affordable housing, King County Affordable Housing Task Force that was on Friday. And they will obviously be gearing up and working in conjunction with the GMPC next year to be looking at the housing element within the upcoming comp plan. We have GMPC tomorrow, which will actually be laying out the agenda for the housing element within the comp plan. So I would encourage you to stay tuned. I don't think that there will probably be a rep on either one of those from Mercer Island next year, just given timing, et cetera, unless somebody's applied and will be appointed already. But otherwise, I will report back on what comes back from GMPC. So with that, we are now returned from the regular part of the business. We're going to move into executive session for approximately 30 minutes for planning or adopting the strategy or position to be taken by the city council during the course of any collective bargaining, professional negotiations, or grievance or mediation proceedings, or reviewing the proposals made in the negotiations or proceedings while in progress pursuant to RCW 4230-1404B. No action will be taken.